And very good discussion. So, as Chair, I'm going to look at the clock at four. We're still at it. Make a fifteen minute break, so ten minute break. So just ahead. Again, thank you. This is a public. Whoops. Thank you, Sean. You are encouraged to speak, present a line of reason, support a position, or to pose or answer a question. Please focus on the applicable guidelines codes and statutes of the project at hand. In the interim, avoid repeating those of others. Applicants for a total of ten minutes. If in their case, this time may be rebuttal for the end of public comment. A speaker representative will have five minutes' time when in writing at least one prior to the meeting. All members of the public minutes. Okay. The provisions of two point eight point zero three of the Metropolitan Code notice is even that a final for this commission is appealed to Chancery Court of Davidson County via a statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Okay. First in our agenda is adoption of the February sixteen twenty twenty-two minutes. Commissioners, do you have any questions or a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
There is a motion. All in favor? Okay. None opposed, and that motion passes. Ms. Ziegler, do we have any changes to our agenda today?
We do. Number J, fourteen oh nine Forest, is removed completely. They changed something so that it could be administrative approval. S for seven oh eight Monroe is deferred until next month. V for two fifty-five Cherokee is pulled completely. They've just removed their request. And C C, which is thirteen oh nine Fifth Avenue North, is deferred.
Okay, thank you. With those changes, commissioners, is there someone who wants to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
There's first, and there's a second. Robin, we know that do we need to? I don't need to repeat to have said that now. Since, I don't need to repeat that now. Right? Okay, great. All in favor of the motions? Okay. Any opposed? None seen? That motion passes. Are there any other council members other than Councilman Withers here to be in our grace with your presence, sir? Okay. Would you like to come forward, or would you like to wait until a project comes forth? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, council member. Okay, staff, we're ready.
All right. As noted to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. We will read out each case one by one. If you are in opposition to the project, please raise your hand when we call out the case that you would like heard. Items removed from the consent agenda will be heard at the end of the agenda.
Question. So if there's someone in the audience that wants to pull that, I will take a look and I will let you know so you don't have to keep moving back and forth.
Yes, and after we call each one, we'll pause, and if anyone would like that to be removed.
All right, public, you understand that, right? So if you have opposition, raise your hand. Okay? Thank you.
So the first item are the administrative permits issued for the prior month, followed by eighteen eleven Lilian Street, new construction of an outbuilding. Is there anyone? Okay. Fifteen oh seven Dallas Avenue, new construction of an outbuilding with a setback determination.
Melissa, I'll watch for you.
Okay, thank you. Six hundred Monroe Street, new construction of an addition with a setback determination. Eleven eleven Gartland Avenue, new construction of an addition. Three thirty Chesterfield Avenue, new construction of an outbuilding with a setback determination. All right, the following item has been removed from the consent agenda, fourteen oh nine Forest. Nineteen oh eight Elliott Avenue, new construction of an addition. Forty-five oh one Park Avenue, partial demolition with new construction of an addition. Three nine three two Cambridge Avenue, new construction of an outbuilding with a setback determination. Two oh three Chapel Avenue, new construction of an addition. And finally, seventeen oh three Villa Place, new construction of an outbuilding with a setback determination.
Yes, Commissioner.
I don't want to pull up this, but may I have a clarifying question about the Villa Place? There was a public comment about the garage access, if the garage was accessible from their own property or the alley. So I think the objection was if a garage access was early, there was objection. But if it's within the parcel, there's no objection. So if I, staff can clarify that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, I reached out to the applicant today, and they said that the access to the garage would be from the alley. So I take that to mean that the neighbor across the alley has an objection. So if you'd like, we can move that to the end of the agenda and present it.
Okay. Very well. So we'll put that at the end of the agenda. Okay? Any other questions, commissioners? Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Staff recommends approval of all of the items on the consent agenda with the applicable conditions, finding that the applications meet their respective, the design guidelines of their respective overlays.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yeah.
Okay, now we can ask the commissioners.
I move for approval of the altered consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, there's a first and a second. All in favor of the motion? Okay. So since she came in later, can we accept that vote as well?
Will she hear pretty entirely of the?
No. Okay, all right. Just have one abstaining. All right. And all in favor, did I just say that? Okay, so that motion passes. Right? Okay, thank you. Where he's on, he's on point.
Thanks for giving me a little extra second there.
Okay.
The historic house at forty-three eleven Utah was demolished during pending legislation, which was the expansion of the Bowling House District. And even though the codes demo permit was held because of the building being eligible for listing in the National Register, the applicant has not provided any information as to why they demolished without a permit, or to make the argument that there was economic hardship. These images are from early twenty twenty-one, when the building was for sale. Staff recommends denial of demolition of forty-three eleven Utah, finding that the project does not meet section three B for demolition, nor seventeen point forty point four twenty E of the zoning ordinance for economic hardship. Staff recommends that an application be submitted for the reconstruction of the historic building by noon May thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, the deadline for the May MHCC public hearing, and that the building be reconstructed within twelve months of issuance of a reconstruction permit.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Good afternoon. I almost say good morning. Quan Po of Wilderlands in five eleven Union Street, Suite twenty-seven hundred. So this is a somewhat of a novel issue that I don't believe has been before the board before, or excuse me, before the commission before, certainly not during my time or my time at Metro. But first, I'll say it's good to see everybody again. I wish my first appearance here was something less complicated.
Good to see you as well.
The issue that, so my client is the current owner of the property. And so the issue that we have here today is basically that the property, the structure that was on the home was demolished, I think mistakenly. But the home was demolished, I believe sometime around late September, early October. The legislation or the expansion of the overlay made this property historic, I believe, sometime in November. And so the issue that we have is that on the date of demolition, the property was not within a historic overlay district. And as I'm sure most members are very familiar, the powers that this board was basically created from and their duties are codified in Metro Section seventeen forty, four ten C specifically. And that gives this commission the ability to review new constructions, alterations of any improvements, as well as the demolition of any improvements. And so on the day that this property, again, was demolished, the historic overlay was not in effect. And so there are very specific things that gives this board power. Unfortunately, the pending legislation doctrine is not one of those. And so basically, the reference to the pending legislation doctrine, what it does is if there is a zoning bill that's pending, it impacts the issuance of permits, right? So if you have a bill that's pending, there's no, the government can't be compelled to issue a new building permit for new construction or demolition. What it does not do is make any zoning ordinance effective prior to the mayor's signature, or prior to the Metro Council actually voting and making that zoning bill become act of law. And so here, we were a full, almost two months before the bill was actually, the zoning legislation was actually passed by the Metro Council, and then the subsequent signature by the mayor's office. And so what we have here is that the board, just quite frankly, doesn't have jurisdiction. The board has jurisdiction now, and it can consider any addition that comes before it. But at the time, the structure was demolished. As you'll see, this is under the quote-unquote violation section. It wasn't a violation because the board did not yet have jurisdiction over that particular property. There are penalties in the code for demolition or building without a permit. My client is currently going through that process, and he's going to have to deal with what those penalties are. But none of those penalties make a zoning bill that is pending effective prior to the affection date. And so while, you know, I always enjoy working with staff and Metro Legal, I know they have a very difficult job. They're often overworked and pulled in a million different ways. But the relationship that I have with them, or how work, however overworked they are, does not really refute what the law is. And the law in this particular matter is clear, that nothing short of a zoning bill itself makes it impact, makes it impact on that particular property. And so certainly, I'm here if you all have any questions. But I think this is, to me, the law on this issue is clear. We respectfully ask that you dismiss this alleged violation, because at the time, there was no jurisdiction before this board. To be clear, they will have to come before this board. They will have to build a home that is fully compliant with what the design guidelines are, and that's fully what my client intends to do. But I think this is just a legal matter, somewhat novel, that does not bring this matter before you prior to the legislation being effective.
Thank you, Mr. Applicant. Do we have any questions at the moment?
I have a question. So when the house was demolished, there was no building permit to demolish the house at all, correct?
Correct. They had not been issued one.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Hi. Welcome back. So what are the ramifications on your client if this violation goes through? I understand what you're saying, and it makes sense that if the law wasn't enacted that yet, that they weren't under this, but if they had gotten that permit, they wouldn't have gotten the permit because it was pending legislation, even if they tried to get the permit. Is that correct?
So you're asking what the penalties are?
What the, I'm twofold. What are the penalties? What's the downside for your client getting a penalty? And if he'd gone through the proper process, he would not have received a permit in any case because it was pending legislation. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I guess I'll take them in turn. The answer to the first question, I think there are a litany of fees that apply to building without a permit or demolition without a permit. Usually, that involves either double or triple fees for your permits. So whenever he comes in, and all the fees that he has to pay for this particular property, he'll likely have to pay three times that amount for each permit, right? That's one of the penalties. As it relates to whether or not a demolition permit would have been issued, I think, you know, first, I'd like to say, we don't concede that the ordinance was in fact pending on the date that the application, that his demolition permit was submitted. That was sometime, and I believe it was September twenty-first was the date. This matter went before the Planning Commission, from what I recall, on September twenty-third, which was sometime thereafter. So whether or not the demolition permit would have been issued, I'm not exactly certain. It's, there are a number of factors that would come into play. I know that he did apply for one, and he received most of the approvals. But whether or not that demolition permit would have been issued, I don't know, because once the property was demolished, that's sort of how all of this.
Let me clarify that first question. You're before us, asking that there not be a violation, correct? That we don't consider this a violation, because it was not, the law was not in effect yet, correct?
Right.
And so my question is, whether there's a violation or not, he still has to get, he still has to go through other procedures for tearing down the house without a permit. What would our, the Historic Zoning Commission violation, how would that affect your client?
Well, I need to, of course, my position is that there is no violation. But I guess how it's impacting the property now is that the staff is not allowing the building permit application to proceed. They have placed a hole in the property to come before this board to be evaluated under the demolition criteria. So I guess that's the immediate impact, if that's what you're asking, that right now there's a hole in the property, and his building permit application has not been allowed to proceed. And maybe I'm not understanding the question, but.
We might get back to you. We'll just, we'll probably have some discussion, but I'm going to open public hearing, and then maybe you can, you might have rebuttal. Thank you, Mr. Quan. Okay. Commissioner, you have anything else on that until we have discussion? Sure. I think we'll have some discussion on that. Open public hearing. If anyone wants to speak on this project. If not, I will close public hearing, seeing none. Okay, so discussions.
I mean, my first question is to Legal. And what's your take?
Here? All right, is that better? Okay. So Legal's position differs from that of the applicant. Our position is that the pending ordinance doctrine would have been in effect at the time of the first demolition application, which went to codes first. And that's because there was an introduction, a first reading of the ordinance proposing the historic overlay in this area. And by that point, before this application came in, the Historic Zoning Commission had approved this particular historic overlay. And so we believe that would, that doctrine would have been in effect, and that would have permitted the refusal to issue a permit for this kind of demolition in this instance. And therefore, I believe that would give the Historic Zoning Commission jurisdiction, precisely because they would have had that power to refuse or to grant a permit. And I believe also, at the point that this application came in, I believe it was also being held under a separate ordinance that gave them a ninety days in order to determine whether or not the property was National Historic Register eligible. But my understanding is that it was demolished before that point. So that's my understanding of the facts in the application, if that clarifies things at all.
Thank you, Ms. Mickelson. Yeah, I think there's this timeline of when and where, and again, that ninety-day hold is what we're reading as well during pending legislation. Commissioner.
Yes. I do appreciate staff's report. I think timeline, date, because legislation was filed August thirty-first, and then by mid-September, September fifteenth, first reading was passed. So clearly, that time, it was already pending legislation. And Historic Zoning Commission, you know, us and body, we did not issue a demolition permit because of the pending legislation, as well as ninety-day hold. So for that, to me, it's like a double violation, without getting a permit, and also without getting permit, physically demolished. So to me, I respectfully disagree our former counsel's opinion, and I think our Legal's opinion is the right interpretation of our intent and legislation. So for that, I am a hundred percent support of staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I agree with Commissioner Johnson. And also, just to bring up a point for the public, that this is, you know, yet another case that's come through, that a lot of self-inflicted wounds by not getting a building permit. I believe it would have been flagged had they gone to codes for a demolition permit due to this legislation that Commissioner Johnson just spoke about and Legal, and therefore, again, you know, something, you know, we have to further penalize people for not doing the right things upfront, whether knowing or unknowing, but it's just, you know, puts us in that position yet again, and therefore, I'm, again, fully supportive of staff's recommendation on this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think it's been stated pretty well by Commissioner Johnson and Jones. I agree with them. I'm not persuaded by the applicant's argument. I am persuaded by the staff recommendation and our own present legal counsel and comments made today.
Okay. Is there a motion? Commissioners, would you like to hear him again? It has to be agreed with us, because I've already closed public hearing. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Let's do it. Thank you, commissioners.
So I thought I was going to be given some rebuttal time.
Well, it was rebuttal to public comment.
Okay.
It's all right.
So just two things I want to point out for the record.
I'll give you one minute.
Two things I want to point out for the record. There is no ninety-day moratorium on demolition. But the ninety-day moratorium that's codified in zoning code, the ninety-day moratorium that's codified in the zoning code applies to neighborhood landmark districts only. That's not what's here at issue before the commission, and it does not cover conservation overlay districts, which this was. Secondly, while we don't concede that the legislation was pending, the legal point that has to be made is that pending legislation or not, it does not make a zoning code ordinance effective prior to its effective date. The only thing that makes zoning effective in Davidson County is the mayor's signature and three readings at council. And so I just want to get that pointed out, and the case that I'm reading from is the Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County versus Harding Academy. And that's a case, a Supreme Tennessee Supreme Court case, that dealt specifically with the pending ordinance legislation, and it states specifically that it controls the issuance or the denial of permits. It does not go so far as to make a zoning bill effective prior to the effective date. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Quan. I think we'd like to hear from Legal one more time.
Sure. So to the extent that the commission has the authority to deny a permit, that could give it the authority to then have jurisdiction over that permit, whether it was granted or not, or violated or not. Otherwise, it really doesn't make sense for them to have any authority to grant or deny the permit, right? If they have no authority, if it's violated, for example. And regarding the ninety days, the ninety-day hold I'm referring to is under sixteen twenty-eight one ninety, and this is in the event that codes receives an application and for a demolition permit for a structure which individually is part of a group of structures, is listed or is eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, or meets the criteria of Tennessee Code annotated seven fifty-one, twelve oh one, as determined by the Historic Zoning Commission, but is not included in historic overlay district. So this is sort of like a backstop for codes for something that at that time was not in the overlay district, but it does mean that it's kicked over to Historic Zoning Commission for their review and consideration before a permit would be issued. But if it helps to simplify it any, I think you could just take out the ninety-day question and just go with pending legislation. I have a legal opinion from May thirtieth, two thousand and seven, which was after the Supreme Court case that was mentioned, and it reads, "As we have previously explained, the pending ordinance doctrine is a judicially created rule that is intended to protect the ability of the legislative body to adopt important changes in public policy by preventing a permit application from obtaining a permit that would work to defeat the goals of legislation that is pending, but has not yet been finally adopted." And that's what we did when we saw the permit come through, is we did not sign off on it, and it was not issued.
Commission? From our purview, it's clear? Okay. Ready to make a motion?
Yes. With all this information, that I'm sure will go somewhere else after this. I, for forty-three eleven Utah Avenue, I move for disapproval or denial of a demolition permit after the fact for finding that the project does not meet section three B for demolition, nor seventeen point forty point four two zero E of the zoning ordinance for economic hardship. I also recommend that an application be submitted for the reconstruction of the historic building by noon May thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, the deadline for the May MHCC public hearing, and that the building be reconstructed within twelve months of issuance of a reconstruction permit.
Is there a motion? There's a second. All in favor of the motion? Okay. None opposed? And that motion passes. Thank you, applicant.
So the first case is four hundred Broadway. This is a circa eighteen seventy brick building that contributes to the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. Back in twenty sixteen, the commission approved a rear and rooftop addition, as well as alteration to the storefront, and some new lighting. The commission approved a larger addition in October of that year, with additional revisions taking place in December twenty sixteen as well. On November second, twenty nineteen, some lights, poles, and speakers were found on the building. These were not approved as part of the previous permits or revisions, and a new permit was not issued for them. Two abatement letters have been sent, but there's been no response from the property owner. In the past, the commission has considered lighting a rooftop In the past, the commission has considered lighting on rooftop additions to be obtrusive because of highlights additions that need to be visually minimized. Also, elements attached to rooftop railings such as banners are not allowed for the same reasoning. This violation includes lighting on railings as well as lighting on poles in the setback area. These do not meet Section 2T of Design Guidelines. As time suggested, additions should be set back a minimum of 30 feet. In this district, this ensures that new construction is compatible and not visually drawing or contrasting. Features are also not approved beyond railings for the same rationale. This violation includes permanently installed features such as poles in the setback area, lights, and speakers attached to the railing in the rooftop addition. None of these meet the Design Guidelines. So Staff recommends, the Staff recommends that the poles, lighting, and speakers installed without permit be removed within 60 days, finding that alterations do not meet Sections 2T for lighting and 2I for rooftop additions. This recommendation will not preclude the applicant from installing features that do not require review or applying features that would meet Design Guidelines. I'm not sure the applicant is here.
Is the applicant here? Okay. We'll have discussion then. Open public hearing? Seeing none, closed public hearing?
I think we've been pretty clear in this on several cases that we've seen in the past few years, that that step-back area is a step-back area for a reason. And it's not to be, you know, have things that are installed in that area. And so unless anyone else has any other further comment, then regarding 400 Broadway, I move for approval of the Staff recommendation for that this is a violation and for the poles, lighting, and speakers installed without a permit to be removed within 60 days.
Okay, there's a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Do you have a comment? This is probably a legal question. So where do we go from here when the applicant is not responding? What is the next step?
At this point, I believe you could also... They're not rehearing before the commission at all. I mean, I believe this is sort of the equivalent of sort of a default judgment in a sense and you can move forward with your determination.
Right.
Simply without any input from them.
So would Staff continue to send notices to the applicant?
We'll send it to Metro Legal.
Okay. Good to know. All right. Thank you.
So 201 Second Avenue was constructed in 1882 and contributes to the Second Avenue Historic Preservation zoning overlay. The building was impacted by the 2020 Christmas Day bombing. The damage to the building include damage to the storefront, Church Street side windows, and the upper chamfered corner of masonry. Previous permits for this building include masonry repair, window replacement, stucco repair in addition, and installation of a new cornice line. The violation when found included work depleted on the storefront and on two first-level windows that were unpermitted, as well as some signage that had been installed without a permit. As of Monday, the two banner signs that were mentioned in the Staff report have since been removed, so the allotment question and the question about materials with its banners have since been resolved. So as previously mentioned, the storefront was impacted by the Christmas Day bombing. It has since been replaced, likely to place in line between February of 2021, November 22nd of 2021. It was also done without a permit. The new design does not replicate what was previously there. The window configuration, trim, casings, and molding pattern have different dimensions and designs from the previous design. The new one does not meet Section 2C3 as it does not replicate the previous design and is not appropriate for the building's style and period. Two lower windows on the Church Street elevation have also been altered. The trim encasements appear to be left the same, but the sashes have been altered so that both sashes are in the same plane. Previously, they were double-hung windows, and the remaining three windows on this level are also double-hung. Staff recommends that the sashes be replaced so that each one is now double-hung again. Currently, they do not meet Sections 2GB and 2H of the guidelines. Finally, the cabinet sign is kind of like the last sign that has an issue. The guidelines state that the opaque background, that signs need to have opaque backgrounds. And the only graphics, text, and logos can be illuminated. In this case, the white is considered to be non-opague because when it's illuminated, light can come through the background. Staff recommends that the lens be changed so it has this kind of opaque background to it. And if this is done, it will meet Section 4J of the guidelines. So with this, Staff recommends that the applicant, as said, the banner signs are removed, but the applicant submit a design for replacement lens with the cabinet sign. Submit drawings for a new storefront to match the previous one and submit materials, dimensions, and make a model for replacement double-hung windows. Within 60 days of the commission's decision, find that the current storefront does not meet Section 2A, 2C, and 2GP for replacement storefronts, and the side facade windows do not meet 2GB and 2H for replacement windows. Staff further recommends that the storefront and side facade windows be replaced within 60 days of the permit being issued. I believe the applicant is here.
Thank you, Kelly. Please come forward. Say your name and address, please.
My name is A.J. Upadia. Address is 2000 Lindell Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee, 37203. Just a brief introduction, we, I, with V.J. Upadia, we own that building for the last 10 years. And we had complied with all of the zoning, historic zoning requirements. Time to time, we change all of the windows on the upper floor, even though we had to do it twice because of the bombing, we had done it before. Now, the, why I'm here is that I really value the ground floor of our property. I value more than anyone else because we own the building. The ground floor of the building has these historic windows, and we want to continue to maintain that historic, the two windows in question. What happened is because of the bombing, the tenant, to protect his property, hired Nashville Madison Glass Company and went ahead and replaced the glass. Obviously, he did not go through the commission because a lot of times we think the replacement of a glass is not a big issue because you got to do it to protect your property. But anyway, that was done sometime in the summer last year. I received a call in January this year that there is a violation in this space. And I said, what is the violation? They say, well, they replaced the glass, actually replaced the window without a permit. I'm going to go, I did present my reasoning to the commission, but I don't think, I don't know whether you have them. So can I pass you like three pages of photographs so you can look at it? I also want to show on the existing window, I also wanted to show you the existing windows right next to the windows that are under violation. So looking at the page one, the glass company replaced the glass. Now, these windows match exactly like the existing window. We have like seven other windows that are identical. To a naked eye, you cannot find a difference between this glass replaced window and the existing window. Now we understand what they were talking about. They're talking about the sash, the carpenter was very careful to protect all of the moldings. We did not change any of the moldings. The only thing is that sash sits on top of each other. I'm okay to replace the sash, move it so it will look like a double-hung window. But I think it's a simple fix and we will do it because I care for that. I do not want a pre-manufactured building like they are suggesting. It will take the character of the ground floor from historic to nonhistoric. We change all of our second, third, and fourth-floor windows manufactured window because that's what we got the permit for and they are more active. But ground floor, I want to maintain the historic look. The second page, second page looks, give you the, what happened during the Christmas Day bombing. The storefront got totally demolished. So the tenant at that time decided to barricade it and then later got Madison Glass Company and Carpenter to replace the glass. Evidently, he didn't follow, he didn't get the memo that he needs to come to the commission and get a permit. So he went ahead and repaired it. Now I'm finding out that if you look at the third page, the difference between previous glass and new glass is the support structure, the mutants were misplaced. The bottom third of the glass is the same as previous. The top two-third, he used a cross section, but old window had a mutants that go up and down. Now, we don't mind, I mean, I hate to demolish all that glass again and rebuild it because we already had a hardship. We did it many times, that building, without any help from anyone. There were a lot of lip surveys that people are going to help to rebuild it, but no one paid a penny. We did it all on our own. It will be a hardship to go demolish this storefront and redo the mutants like they want, but we can do it. It'll just cost, it will cost them money. And the marginal return on the investment is very little because it covers the glass. You can hardly see the storefront before because of the yawning. And the second issue is that the place is vacant and we are planning to get a tenant in there. Now, tenant may come back with a totally different architecture to the commission while Second Avenue is being built. He may have a, so I'm thinking just postpone this, demolishing this window right now and wait till I have a tenant. We approach the Staff and redo the frontage as required. But I think it will be a hardship to, for me to go demolish this storefront because it's protecting the space and then convert it to the original mutant layout. Thank you.
Do you have a question? I do have a question first. When you replaced those windows that I heard you say, you replaced the windows, did you refer to the Design Guidelines at that time?
You're talking about the window and...
The replacement, yes. When you replaced it, did you, did you contact Metro Historic Zoning to confirm that those windows were appropriate for the Design Guidelines?
The windows were replaced by the tenant, and I had no knowledge, no knowledge about. He replaced the glass. He did, and in the process, the carpenter who did it, he didn't do, he knew to save the moldings and the mutants and build it exactly like the other ones.
Right. But he did not go to Staff to get that confirmed? Did he, because it is a second, respectfully, is that the Second Avenue restoration was very well-known and very well-publicized on restoring it back to preservation, historic preservation. So I guess my question is, did you, would your vendor, he, the question is, did he actually go to the commission?
Obviously not.
Okay. Right.
Yeah. The thing is that the Church Street window is easy fix, and we don't mind within the next 60 days to move the sash for those window to look identical to the other window.
Sure.
The storefront, I want a little time because we are not sure what is going to go to that space, you know, whether it's going to be a restaurant, a bar, or shop.
Sure, we understand that.
And if, so I'm asking commission to just have mercy, leave that glass there for a while till we have tenant, because we already had a tremendous hardship. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to put that building together.
Sure. I have another commissioner. Thank you for answering my question.
How you doing? I'm your neighbor. I live on the corner of Third and Church. And from what I understand, this is the George Dickel Building.
Yes.
Which is an important building. And I've walked by your building, you know, most every day for the last 13, 14 years. And I'm very happy to see that you've put glass in the back of the building because for all the time I've walked by that building, there's, it's been open to the elements.
Yes.
And so for 14 years, that building was not protected. And so that is a concern to me. And I'm happy that you've got windows in there now. But what the, your tenant plans to do does not affect what the guidelines are for protecting this important architecture in Nashville. And so I don't think that, you know...
No, I totally agree with you. We are on the same side. The only thing I'm asking you is to give me a little time. The building is protected right now. Give us a timeframe till we get a tenant and come back to you.
You'll have 60 days, applicant. The recommendation is that you have 60 days to remedy.
Nothing could be done in 60 days.
Right. Yes, so, good.
But I'm just asking you to give us a little more time.
Sure. We understand.
Yeah. The, on the Church Street side, I'm okay. We will replace it to look at a double-hung window. I'm going to hire the carpenter, put it back, back it like all the other windows are.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. You might have a few more minutes if we have rebuttal from public. I'm going to open public hearing. Is anyone here to speak on this project? If not, we'll close public hearing.
I'd like to say to the applicant, I'm very sorry for what you've been going through ever since the bombing. It's a terrible set of circumstances and my heart goes out to you. At the same time, I echo Commissioner Mahal's comments that the guidelines are pretty clear on how this is supposed to work. I'm sorry that your tenant didn't, maybe was doing things while, without you knowing what he was doing and it's gotten you into this situation.
We are not blaming my tenant.
Okay.
We are ready to comply with it. I'm just asking for your motion.
Having heard that, I appreciate your request. I still agree with, this is the Second Avenue Historic Preservation zoning overlay, which is our highest level of review and compliance that we look at. It's, you know, in a lot of ways Nashville's gem of Historic Zoning District. And I feel like we, in this case, need to insist that the storefront be rebuilt as it was originally.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I appreciate, David, what you, Commissioner, what you said here. This is, I don't have any problems with extending the time period another 30 days to give the, to give him an additional time to get this. So 90 days, is that...
Well, and I'll just add to that real quickly so you know how many days you want to give him. They actually have 120 days because they have 60 days to submit drawings and then another 60 days to actually do the work.
Right.
The way it's written right now, but I mean, of course, you can change that.
So we have 120 days.
So did you understand that, that you actually have 120 days to get it done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're, we're closed.
Okay, we're, we've closed public hearing. So let's just, commissioners, let's just be sure we've got this really clear and sounds like there's ample time and, and we'll see how that goes because we are sympathetic to supplies and demand. So we'll just.
Yeah, speaking to that, I'm glad that you clarified that, Robin, just for that point, because I thought it was 60 days. It says, I mean, I guess to me, how it reads currently, sort of, submitted design, okay, submitted design. Well, because, I mean, you could order them today and you ain't getting them in 60 days. I'll tell you that right now. So, yeah, I'm aware. You can't get them. You can't get storefront in any amount of time right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, correct, sir. So it's just, you know, with, to me, I would like this, you know, to get changed as it was, but just how it is now being, you know, not a huge difference. I mean, it's, you know, I don't know. It's just giving, again, I'm not sure what that time is. We've kind of discussed now that it's 120 days. You know, just a little bit of, and I'm not one for leeway, actually. So this is against most of the things I say in here, but.
Because you know the market.
Yeah, that, I mean, again, I do intimately know the supply market right now, especially for windows and this type of work and just getting that done. So, you know, putting in a, you know, having 60 days maybe to submit drawings and then kind of going from there, you know, I guess, I'm sure, I don't know. I don't know how that, that works in the staff processes of, you know, the timeline. But, you know, I would just, I am in favor of a little bit of leeway, just the fact that they are just dealing with what they've dealt with. It wasn't self imposed. Yes, they installed these windows, but they just needed windows, you know. So that, the most amount of time that I think the commission is comfortable with is what I would like to go with for fixing this specific issue.
120 days.
If that's it, then that's it.
I was thinking maybe 60 days for drawings as part A, and then maybe 90 days for actually having it replaced. That'd be 150, right?
Yeah, okay. All right. Yeah, good with that, Commissioner?
I don't, this may go, this may be a question for legal. This may be go beyond like what are, what we're allowed to request. But if we do drawings within the 60 days, I mean, then can you do like evidence of a purchase order or something like that? Because then,
that's a good point.
Then it's like you've, you're showing that, that they've made the, you know, they've made the motion to get that moving and it's up to, I mean, because of supply chain issues, they can't help that, but at least they've got it in motion.
That, that is exactly what we've done in the past, is someone has shown that they've ordered them and, you know, some kind of information about how long they may take to get there. And so we've extended based on those, that kind of information.
Okay. So they can work with you, staff on that? Does that sound reasonable? Okay. Let's make the motion.
Madam Chair, with respect to 201 Second Avenue North, I recommend that we accept the staff recommendation that the applicant submit, as written here in front of us, drawings for a restoration of the storefront within 60 days and an additional 90 days for the replacement or evidence that the purchase order of the windows necessary has been secured.
With the assumption that they have, they have the purchase order given to the staff?
Yes.
Okay. There is a motion. There is a second. All in favor of the motion?
I'm in.
I see none opposed, so that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Applicants.
So 207 Broadway is a circa 1940s two-story commercial structure that does not contribute to the store character of the Broadway Store Preservation Zoning Overlay. The current violation is in regards to the mural and eastern elevation. The current banner signs that you see were prior to the overlay taking effect on this block. So those are not in question at this time. Two lawyers of abatement have been sent to the owner about the murals, but we have not received any information from him or any contact from him. The current mural, mural it sees is square footage, allow for mirrors under, under the guidelines. And it's also found on the lower and upper floors. Typically, the guidelines do not want mirrors on the lower floors, but just the upper. The goal of having smaller sized murals is to limit damage in the future if the murals are to be replaced. Also, having them solely on upper floors helps with, not helps with, but continues to sort, sort precedent of having murals up high. Again, this building is not contributing. It was constructed of concrete block. Also, this elevation was not meant to be exposed. It's not a corner lot. Of course, it's facing a parking lot currently. So staff argues that a location like this on a historic building, the mural could be appropriate for the historic character of the district rather than solid color or vinyl signs that are up there now. Also, we do have hope that the surface parking lot will be kind of, will have an infill placed in the future. So maybe one day this mural will be covered up by that infill. If the commission agrees with this, the only other property that's not contributing in this district with a side facing surface parking lot is 123 Second Avenue South. With this, staff recommends approval of the mural on the fact that the building is nonhistoric and is located on an interior block that is next to a surface parking lot. Finding the signage meets section 4A of the guidelines for painted murals. Again, I'm not sure if the applicant is here or not.
I do have a question for staff. So the picture shows, the picture shows that besides the mural, there's banners up?
Yes, ma'am.
So do we have an allotment guideline on that? Or are we asking that to be removed?
Those were there prior to the overlay, so we have not made them, removed them since they were there prior.
Okay.
They've switched them out, but the same, but there have been three banners there since prior to, prior to this 200 block being added to the district.
Okay. Duly noted. Okay. Applicant, are you here? If not, I will open a public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I wholeheartedly agree with staff recommendation. I was reading staff report like a mystery novel. Where does it go? Are we covering with this white paint or are we allowing, you know, this uniquely Nashville mural? Because who would not love Chris Craggs and, you know, Guthrie, Nashville's own artist? So I think in this specific location, staff report is right on. I wholeheartedly approve staff recommendation.
You're making a motion, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, none opposed. That motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is 1712 Ashwood Avenue. The applicant for 1712 Ashwood Avenue requests demolition of the contributing home, arguing for economic hardship. The house at 1712 Ashwood Avenue is a circa 1915 contributing home in the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. 1712 Ashwood has been largely neglected for a number of years, suffering from prolonged hoarding and accumulation of trash. Because of this, the home has fallen into disrepair. It is the commission's primary goal to ensure the preservation of historic buildings. Demolition requests are reviewed by staff in detail, providing not only an analysis of the information given, but an analysis of what questions remain. It is the responsibility of the applicant to prove hardship rather than for staff to disprove hardship. Economic hardship is not based on the personal hardship of the owner, whether or not new construction would be cheaper, or the ability of the property owner to realize the highest and best use of the property. The applicant has provided two engineering reports. The reports describe foundation issues and issues with structural deflection and stress due to years of overload and clutter from the previous owner's hoarding. The reports also discuss issues with moisture damage, termite damage, mold, rot, and general deterioration from years of neglect and clutter. Staff recently visited the home and observed many of these issues, but found most of these issues to be issues commonly found in structures of this age. Repairs and reinforcing are often necessary, but rarely require full demolition of the structure. There is no doubt, however, that the years of hoarding and general, general neglect with this home has exacerbated many of these issues here. Despite these unfortunate circumstances, staff finds that the home is not beyond repair, however. The applicant has also provided a demolition estimate, two cost of compliance estimates, and an as-is market value estimate, and a post restoration market value estimate. The applicant has provided several nearby comparables to support these estimates. It is possible that the as-is market value of the property is undervalued, given the comparables provided, but staff suspects that 800,000 to 900,000 post renovation market value of the home is likely accurate. The estimate does not include the possibility of an addition, which would further increase the market value of the home. The current owner has only owned the property since October 1st of 2021, and so is not responsible for the disrepair and deterioration of the home. The current owner agreed to purchase the property sight unseen without a formal walkthrough. Staff finds that the applicant created his own hardship by agreeing to purchase a home, knowing the issues regarding hoarding, and without an appraisal and inspection. He was alerted to potential issues by not being able to obtain a loan for the home. It is incumbent on the applicant to make an informed purchase. Though undiscovered conditions may have existed at the time of purchase, staff finds the undiscovered conditions discussed do not necessitate full demolition of a structure as they are described. There is no doubt that the hoarding and general lack of upkeep over the years exacerbated the deterioration of the home. Staff finds that the home is not beyond reasonable repair. Staff recommends denial of demolition of 1712 Ashwood Avenue, finding that the project does not meet section 3B2 for appropriate demolition and 1740 420E for economic hardship. The project meets section 3B1 for inappropriate demolition. The applicant is also here to speak, and he has provided some slides as well to go through. But I am happy to take any questions, if you have any, while I'm up here.
Any questions to Joseph? Thank you, Joseph.
Thanks.
Applicant?
There we go. Sorry, I apologize. Thanks for coming yesterday and touring my home and seeing what I'm, what I'm dealing with a little bit. I hope everyone had a hot shower after they left, left the house. I purchased the home from a friend. I want to kind of give a background. In Atlanta, my job, transferred me to the Atlanta area back in 2008, and then transferred me over Tennessee and Arkansas in 2019. So with COVID, I wasn't doing as much work traveling. I chose Nashville is where I wanted to be, but I've been looking for a home since 2019, really the fall. And as you know, in the market, it's pretty expensive to buy here in any, in any neighborhood. And so it took some time to, and a lot of research, and I've tried to buy multiple houses. I'm not an investor. I'm not a house flipper. And a friend of mine mentioned her father's home back in April of last year, which is this home here, that may eventually be coming on the market because his health was deteriorating. And I had not seen the house. He had a really bad hoarding issue, which you'll see on the slides here in a moment. His health gradually declined. He didn't let any inspections, any kind of appraisal. She wasn't even allowed in the house. She hadn't been in the house in over 10 years. It was a real tough situation she was dealing with. She'd go visit him from the front sidewalk area of the house. I end up looking at exterior pictures, drove by the house in May, but I wasn't really allowed on the property because he hadn't fully moved out. He was back and forth. She was bringing him back and forth for care. Eventually moved him into a full-time care facility in Atlanta in May of last year, the end of May. She still was trying to keep his best wishes, didn't want people in the house. And then she said, you really can't see in the house. And I didn't really know what she meant. She sent me some photographs when she was up here and, and kind of started judging it. And she said, you know, I don't think it's going to pass inspection by any, or appraisal by any lender. You're, this is going to have to be a cash deal. And I told her, look, you know, I'm, it's going to be tough to do a cash deal on this house at the purchase price, but, you know, we kind of talked about it in the area and, and eventually agreed on a price and sight unseen. And I didn't realize until, if you could start the slides, if you don't mind. Oh, I'm sorry. So these, this is the foundation that many of you saw yesterday, the front. But I want to kind of give the background as to why I didn't see this prior to the purchase. And I'll go back to these. But I want to go to the, I probably should have put these at the beginning. This was some of the hoarding issues, and this is a video, and I hope it plays because it, I don't know where the play button is. Is it in the middle? Okay, well, that didn't work. Let me go back to this. So there were 150, 154 buckets of rice just on the second story floor. He was a Y2K prepper type of person. And each one of those buckets weighed 52 pounds because we weighed them. So they were heavy. And if you do the math, it's over 8,000 pounds just in the upstairs bedroom. And it had caused the ceiling to sag. We couldn't get in the front door because the interior, I went past my house. Wow, I didn't know. I apologize, but I had all the walk-in video. Joseph, do you know anything out of, when I sent him the videos I showed you?
I'm not sure. It's not working on our computer.
There was a motorcycle in the kitchen. I mean, that's kind of after the, after the cleanup.
We have photos of a lot of that in the staff report. We've got photos of the spaces and the motorcycle and just so that you know.
Did you see, I was just trying to show the, what I, the entryway. One of the videos shows.
There were multiple photos in the application.
Okay. Thank you. Anyway, I couldn't gain entry into the house. And when I got into the basement after the fourth day of emptying it in January, the crew called me and said, have you seen the basement foundation? And I, you know, there's rats and vermin in there. That's what the basement looked like from the back door. So the entire foundation wall and the interior was not visible. It was stacked to the ceiling, as you can see, from the front to the back. That was the kitchen. There's the foundation. He had jacked the house up himself because it was starting to fall and dive to the back. So he put railroad ties as supports in the middle. And the house right now is teeter tottering on two of those pillars. Some of you may have seen when I reached the sill plate on top of the foundation is completely gone in most areas. And you can grab the foundation rocks and move them because it's a rock and concrete foundation. The front, there's a natural spring that runs alongside, basically behind a lot of the houses, but that one runs, it hits the foundation and it comes up whenever it rains into that hole that's in the basement. And it's washed out the hole, if you're facing the house, the right side of the foundation wall on that side. You can see the leaning, the cracks have gone all the way, you know, up the, up all three floors. The support beams are leaning towards the back of the house. There's, it's kind of blurry, but there's his moisture meter and it goes, most of the support structures holding up the house at the top, in the bottom floor in the balcony are either dry rotted or eaten up from termite damage. There's an example there of one of the main support beams. It's completely, you can poke, poke your finger into the beam. It's completely gone. There's the support structure. That's one of two. That's the one closest to the front of the house that's holding the whole house up. If those are removed, the whole house will fall down because you can literally grab by the back wall and it moves. So he suspended the house as the foundation had failed. And we didn't see any of this until we got it emptied out. There's the mold and one of the floor jacks that's holding it. When the house started to fall down the hill, the plumbing in one of the bathrooms separated, so it's no longer attached and, and causing, you know, only one of the bathrooms to work. You can see how much the lean is on the main support beam in the basement. There's another one off several inches. The back wall has failed and is falling out into the back. The back wall has failed and is falling out into the backyard for the main structure, which has then caused, according to the report that I submitted, has caused the front foundation wall to fall because it's pulled it back towards the backyard. The bricks, that's facing the right, that's the right wall. If you're facing the house, that's to the right. As the foundation has sunk, which it's sinking to the far right, all the bricks collapsed and fell. And Julia, the girl I purchased the home from, she said that stack of bricks, one of the neighbors called code, I don't know if it was you folks or code enforcement, because he hadn't picked the bricks up. So that's the reason you saw those stacked bricks in the back, is because they had fallen and broken. And then the sheathing, she said that was six... I think she said six years ago, but you can see the exposure to the elements. The woods all turned black over the years. There's what's left of the front foundation. It's already collapsed in across the front. And I know there's another view, and that beam across the front, the sill plate's missing on half of it, and it's rotted and demolished. The front porch area is diving down because the whole wall's gone, and especially facing the house to the right. All I'm asking for is help to build something safe. I'm not a flipper, I'm not a house, I'm not an investor. But don't make me put something brand new on top of something bad. That foundation is gone. It's already demolished itself. I'm just asking for your permission. You have all the power, not me. Just to consider letting me... I'll rebuild it exactly the same as that looks. If you want me to buy the... Put the exact... Match that picture when I'm done, I'm willing to do it. I just don't want to put all my money into something that I'm worried about for any of my family members or anyone else to be in because it's going to fail again. And the only way to get to that front is to get rid of that whole front, jackhammer out all the concrete, and then try to do some kind of water remediation. And at that point, it'll never be as strong as a new constructed foundation wall. It's the bones of the house. I understand a lot of the neighborhood...
Mr. Rainwater, you have 30 seconds.
Okay. I understand a lot of the neighborhood. They want to keep the front facade. But that's the biggest portion of my house that's failed the most, is the front facade. So at that point, I'll shut up. And I appreciate your time.
We thank you as well. Open public hearing? Close public hearing?
You know, we do take these things seriously. And I did walk through this house yesterday. Went at the wrong time. But I did walk through and then reading, you know, going through the engineer reports. You know, we see several of these. And, you know, obviously, this is the most serious thing that we do as a commission. One of is that we are here to save historic structures as much as we can and as intact as we can. And I have to say, after walking through, after reading these structural engineering reports, you know, I am swayed by especially the Basset Engineering Report, where it just says, you know, in his opinion, "Having been involved in more than 500 historical home evaluations in the past 10 years, the viability of salvaging this home while adhering to historical renovation and conforming to the current building code criteria is not practical." I just, you know, when you're going through all the different things that will have to be done to this home just to make it safe, you know, again, not even counting, you know, the things that we don't count to make it nice in, you know, 2022, but just to make it a habitable structure, I just don't think there will be anything really left of the historic home at that point. So that's my opinion on this. It was one of the worst I've walked through on the commission. And that's... Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Also to disclose that four of us were there as well, so... Sorry? Okay, yes, please.
I think I see the gentleman that was with us from the... Who's head of the Belmont Hillsborough Historic Neighborhood Association. He and the former president walked through this home with us. I don't recall her name. And I guess y'all aren't really... Should be, but, you know, you're not really supposed to talk, give your opinion to commission members when they're walking through. But she did say that the spring runs... It's kind of on a hill, and the spring runs through all the houses down there. And there's been a lot of the neighbors who have had to put a ton of money into their homes because of this issue. I think this issue was exasperated by the fact that the gentleman was a hoarder and didn't take care of his home. It was... And so I just wanted to disclose that to the commission. I do concur with you, though, that it is in terrible shape. And I'm, you know, I'm not an architect, you know? And I can see it looks pretty bad. I'd be interested... I just wanted to let the rest of the commission know what that president had said to me. And not this gentleman here, but, you know, but the woman who was your predecessor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I was one of the commissioners that walked through the house yesterday. And while, I mean, we take demolitions extremely seriously. And so I am interested to see what the other commissioners thought who did the walkthrough. But reading the staff report, the structural engineers' report, I am also swayed that this house is beyond reasonable help. I think there were several issues that we saw in the house that can be remedied if they are one of one condition, or one of two, or one of three conditions. But this house seemed to have all of the conditions. And they started at the foundation level. And you can, you know, it is feasible, and this was part of the staff report, it is feasible to repair foundations and to be able to, like, lift up the house, do repairs on foundations. But that's oftentimes with the upper portion of the house, being able to withstand that type of force and kind of interference while you're doing the foundation repair. But the upper portion of the house, the framing, everything is so out of plumb. It wasn't just one foundation wall. It was... The front foundation was failing. The back foundation wall was bowed out. One of the side, if not both sides, the foundation walls were bowed out. And then with the upper levels not being plumb, it's like the whole house is racking or appears to be. And to me, it's really sad. I was hoping to come into this and to be able to read the report and say, "No, I think that this could be saved." But I think what you will lose of the house trying to make the repairs, starting with the foundation and knowing with this house, it's not just the foundation, it's moving all the way through the house, I'm not sure what's going to be left of the house if you do that. I concur with Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I was at the walkthrough as well. I have not had a chance previously to walk through because of the schedule conflict. So this house and the, you know, next house is the only house I had opportunity to walk through. So it was... Interestingly, I thought the upstairs roof beam was rather good shape. But I agree, the foundation is the key issue. Because I was wondering, how can we salvage this, you know, relatively good condition of the rafters of the roof? But if we, you know, move the foundation and raise up and jack up, will... I mean, first floor is completely gone, I mean, totally split. So I think jacking up will further exacerbate, you know, those already not straight, you know, beam and pillar. So sadly, I have to concur with, you know, other commissioners and as well as engineering report. If a foundation was more solid and there's a way to salvage, you know, interior or architectural structure, but in this case, combined with natural spring, and it would be a rather difficult task.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you all for attending the walkthrough. I wasn't able to make it yesterday to either one of them. So I really appreciate hearing everybody's feedback. It sounds like the commission has reached a recommendation here. I just want to say for the record and for the public, it's very risky to buy a house sight unseen in this kind of situation. And we do take discussions of economic hardship pretty seriously. And the idea that you create your own economic hardship by buying something that you maybe shouldn't have. Or you overpaid for something, and now you say, "Oh, I need to..." The commission needs to let me off the hook, right? We're not in the business of letting people off the hook for these kinds of situations. And it's... I think everyone here would agree, this is not any kind of precedent for... We've seen houses in this bad of shape before and said no to demolition. So anyway, I just wanted to say that. But thank you again for everybody who was able to make it.
With that, though, reading... I'm just going to put you to point because we did see it. Just reading it in the summary, what is your opinion?
Based on other commissioners' feedback and what they saw in person, it sounds like the house... It would be hard pressed to structurally survive the amount of work that it would need, given the level of deterioration of the foundation.
Just following that as well is, you know, for public hearing and for those who, contractors and buyer beware. You've said it, the commission has expressed that. But thank you, staff, for always having a good summary for us. And we know that our purview is to preserve historic structures. That's our purview. So whether we do our best, someone else may come and say, "You looked at my house and you said, 'Tear this down right now.'" So just to have that public comment that we don't take this lightly and that this won't happen for everyone that comes before us. So I want to thank the commission for always being transparent and being forthright about these demolition requests because we're getting more of those than we would like. So with that said, we will take the vote? Did we take the vote already? Nope. Let's take the vote, please.
With hearing the other commissioners' comments, and again, several of us having visited the home and with these engineering reports regarding 1712 Ashwood Avenue, I move for approval for full demolition.
There is a motion. Is there a second? There is a second. All in favor of the motion? Okay. Any opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, this next one is 102 South 14th Street. The applicant requests demolition of the contributing home at 102 South 14th Street, arguing for economic hardship. 102 South 14th Street is a contributing circa 1900 folk Victorian framehouse in the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The house suffered from a period of neglect and later suffered damage in the March 3, 2020 tornado. On March 19, 2021, one year after the tornado, the home was sold to the current owner. The current owner applied for a preservation permit for an addition and restoration of the home in July of 2021. The commission approved the proposed rear addition and the demolition of the non-contributing outbuilding on July 21 of 2021. As partial demolition work began on the home, the applicant states that they discovered the house was in worse condition than originally anticipated. And today, the applicant requests demolition of the home, arguing for economic hardship. The applicant has provided one engineering report from Barry R. Field with Field's Engineering Consulting Consultant Services, LLC. The report notes issues with foundation and framing, including a cracked and unsupported brick foundation, lack of footings in areas, missing and broken roof tresses, decayed and broken floor joists, collapsed chimney, lack of structural supports, and general decay, deterioration, and mold. Staff recently visited the home, and staff's observations of the home agree with the items discussed in the engineering report and the application. The applicant has also provided a demolition estimate, a cost of compliance estimate, and as-is market value estimate, and a post restoration estimate of $1 million. The applicant has provided four nearby comparables to support these estimates. Staff finds the issue for this case isn't so much the cost of repairs, but the inability to repair and retain the few remaining historic elements of the building due to such extreme deterioration. Most of the significant damage and deterioration seems to have occurred in the years of neglect leading up to the tornado and in the tornado itself. However, the full extent of this damage and deterioration was not evident until work began on the house. The issue for this case isn't the cost of repairs, but the inability to repair. The application was presented as an economic hardship request based on the fact that the building is historic. However, between neglect and tornado damage, few historic features remain of the historic home. And of the few that remain, many, if not most, will require replacement. From the information provided and from visual review of the property, staff finds the number of repairs needed would result in a non-contributing building. Staff recommends approval of full demolition of the house at 102 South 14th Street, finding that demolition meets Section 3B2B as the necessary demolition required to repair the building will result in a non-contributing building. And the project meets Section 3B2A as repairs are not possible in a manner that retain what is left of the historic building. The applicant is here, and I can take questions if needed before he comes up.
Thank you, Joseph. Any questions to him at the moment? Okay. Mr. Applicant? Or Ms. Applicant?
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. Joseph, thanks for laying out a timeline there. Keeps me from having to go through all my notes. And thank the commission for coming out yesterday. I think that was really helpful to sort of see it. And as Joseph sort of touched on, the primary points are, you know, this was in the middle of the tornado and tarped. And my client bought it after the tornado. And we knew, I mean, I think his first question to us was, "Can this house be demolished?" And staff, like all the houses in the tornado, had already done preliminary reviews. So we got feedback really early that the house was salvageable and proceeded, you know, with great expense to the client to sort of design the renovation. And I think that the demolition, as you saw yesterday, really revealed a lot of stuff. And I think Joseph touched on all those points. And one of the things that I think came out of the meeting yesterday, I think our ability to preserve at least two or three features from that house would be really nice. Some of them have already been sort of salvaged and stored in safe places. The mantel piece, I think we would want to restore, keep that as well. But I think it sort of goes back to the fact that, as we definitely saw, this is a house with bricks stacked on dirt. And not rocks, just soft dirt that you can sort of take out with your fingers. And, you know, as we explained yesterday, we work on lots of houses without solid concrete foundations. That's pretty typical. This was a little unusual for me in that there was not even a rock underneath it. Just, you know, eight inches below grade, not below the frost line, but just below grade. So that really is the basis. And then, as you saw from the report, there were several other problems sort of above that. I'm going to let the structural engineer speak, and I could certainly answer any other questions. Also, sort of, the structural engineers here and the contractors not, but Dwayne was there, and I think he offered a lot of really good insight. And Dwayne has worked on some really complicated projects, including the 1807 Russell Street project, which was also a tornado house that Dwayne was able to sort of cinch back together and rebuild. He also built the new one at 1812 Holly, which is in Phil, and has worked on, more recently, 2700 Oakland. So he has a long history of working on these old houses and is generally not scared of what he sees. But I think this one caused everybody a lot of pause. And I appreciate the fact that you all were able to come out and meet with us in December, as soon as the demo was complete, to sort of reassess the situation. And I'm going to turn it over to the structural engineer. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Barry Field, 77 Cothers Street, Crossville, Tennessee. Name of my company is Field's Engineering Consultant Services. Been in business since 1987. Have constructed, overseen the construction of 262 houses in that period of time. And we also, on the other hand, we have a building crew that does demolition, basically anything... demolition, basically anything that you need for a house. And, uh, this, this, uh, that, you know, I always go back to, uh, I like simple. Um, um, I, I like simple things. And they, they taught us, they taught us in, uh, engineering school that everything, uh, it all boils down to, everything has got to, whether it's a lot, whether it's a camera, whatever it is, it's got to somehow go back to the foundation. This backbone in this house, there is so many things that do not go back to the foundation. That, this is my personal opinion and my professional opinion. I wouldn't put my five guys in there to try to remodel this, to do any work to this house from a safety standpoint. And I stand behind that. And if anyone's got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Uh, you know, most of these things, we, we, uh, uh, kind of fall in the gray area. Uh, you can kind of go either way. Uh, but this one don't go either way. This one goes, it needs to go. It's a, it's a safety hazard.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate being here. And, uh, no questions?
Not at the moment. Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the applicant's side? You would have five minutes for rebuttal, just to remind you. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Okay. Just want to make a general comment as well. Going through the house as well, I think in general, when we get recommendations and summaries and from professionals, um, what I can appreciate hearing is one who has had the experience of it. And those who were there, um, the other day, was that yesterday? Yes, yesterday, is that it sounded like, and what they were going through was they were doing their very best to preserve this contributing building. And that is, again, our purview as a commission. So we are always on the utmost about, have we done our best to preserve that historic structure? And from what we could hear yesterday, and, and again, from what I could hear, that was done very well to try to preserve what was there. So, other commissioners?
Yeah, I would agree with that. It was, um, with this, with this project, I mean, the team had gone through, the steps towards preservation and as the, um, as they were, were kind of taking the part, uh, the house to preserve it, the things that were unearthed, um, uh, the, the structural instability of the house became, um, became quite visible. And I think one of the, well, and, and I will back up and just say that, that it, it pains this commission to, um, to, to approve demolition request. It's not something we take lightly. It is not something that we like to do. We are in the business of saving homes and, um, it, it pains us to do that, to do that. And just having had a, a case before this one, it pains me to say this, but I, I agree with the staff recommendation for demolition. Um, onsite yesterday, seeing that the, um, this house doesn't have a, a spread foundation, it's a pier foundation, but the, the, and, and as the, the architect was stating, the piers of this, um, foundation are not resting on rock. There's no built up concrete. It was loose dirt under a brick pier that only went eight inches below grade. And so, and, and that's just one piece of this. The, um, just the, the condition of, of all of the framing, um, it, it is, it's, it's, I think, beyond, um, beyond salvageable.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, yes, I, I have seen this house as well at the tour yesterday, and I really do appreciate a professional opinion who has done numerous restoration, especially after the tornado. Uh, those words and experience are really, uh, helpful as well. But seeing, uh, really poor foundation without footing, I am surprised the house is still standing. Uh, if tornado, it would be easily pick up and, you know, that kind of, uh, you know, really, uh, weak foundation. So, uh, so by the time we insist on repairing, uh, literally lose historical significance. And seeing this particular house, I think, uh, you know, historical house, some are really well-built with the foundation and, you know, s- structure. But some are, I have to admit, uh, like really quickly not sturdy-built. So unfortunately, this house is lathered. So it's, yes, our job is to preserve and, you know, not demolish the house. That would be our goal, but however, safety and by the time we finish all the restoration, that will lose historical significance. So in this case, I think demolition will be appropriate.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, to me, there was just no, no question that there's just nothing left of that house. And, and it was poorly built to start with and it's, and so, um, I'm a hundred percent for demolition.
Um, one other thing too, before we, you make the motion, again, general comments, is that one detail that, um, really appreciate seeing contractors and builders do is shoring up. Um, we really take a look at that. And this particular building was appropriately shored to be sure that, uh, again, staff could come and look at it and, and be affirmed on a recommendation to the commission. So thank you for those who do that and just fair warning again. Commissioner, you ready?
I lost mine. Oh, I'm curious. Madam Chair, with respect to one oh two South Fourteenth Street, I- Oh, thank you, Madam Commissioner. Um, with respect to one oh two South Fourteenth Street, I, um, recommend that we approve with staff recommendation for full demolition of the home.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor of the motion? None opposed, I see. So that motion passes. Thank you, applicant.
This next request for two hundred Broadway. Sean, do you mind going to the first slide? There's just two. Uh, the request is to construct a marquee structure with changeable copy and to install a corner projecting sign. Review gets complicated because of the multiple sections of the design guidelines this project touches, including modifications for exceptional design and for tourist-oriented businesses. So I'm going to try to just oversimplify it because you have it all in the report. If you would go to the next one. It does not directly meet the design guidelines because the marquee covers more than the entrance. Signage exceeds the allotment by approximately eighty-seven square feet. The projecting sign exceeds the maximum dimensions. And the changeable copy is not on a wall sign and covers more than fifty percent of the sign area. Staff recommends approval of the proposal based on the findings of fact in your report and with the conditions that there be no bare bulbs on any signage and that the bare bulbs that are on the underside of the marquee be a warm white color and not flash or chase. Both of these, uh, the applicant has agreed to. Further, if approved, staff recommends that the commission acknowledge that the building and the tourist-oriented business are unique in the district. And approval of the project does not set a precedent for future projects at other locations. Staff suggests that marquees do not meet the design guidelines for buildings that are less than four stories, less than eighty feet in width, and that do not meet the qualifications for a tourist-oriented building. And that in general, where marquees are found to be appropriate or might be found to be appropriate, they should only span primary entrance and they should not include electronic changeable copy. Width should be determined based on the historic building and not the width of multiple buildings combined for one business. Number of stories should not be determined based on the historic buil- should be determined based on the historic building and not rooftop additions. Recognizing that the guidelines already consider the massing of a building in terms of appropriate allotment, staff suggests that the projecting sign should only be allowed some leeway on signage allotment when it is attached to a building of similar scale to this one, when the building serves as an immediate gateway into another historic district, as this one does into Second Avenue. The proposed signage is allowing for the retention of existing signage conditions and when the signage is paired with a qualifying tourist-oriented business. And the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Robin. Any questions to Robin at the moment?
Robin, I do. Um, that projecting sign, you know, there's currently a projecting sign on that corner. Is the one that they're proposing larger, smaller, same?
It's the same height, but it'll be wider.
Okay.
Okay. Anything? Applicant?
Commissioners, uh, my name is Pablo David and I'm a representative of AJ Capital. Um, first of all, thank you all for being here. We really do appreciate all the work that you do. Um, hopefully, we're becoming some familiar faces. Um, as you may know, we've preserved the May Hosiery Sock Mill, the Greer Stadium Scoreboard. Um, we applied and were approved for the exit-in Historic Landmark Overlay and will be in the process of, um, preserving the Merritt Mansion in Wedgewood, Houston. Um, we're here before you today after, um, many months of work alongside staff. And I'd like to re- thank staff, Robin and Tim, for all their work that they've put into this and coming to a sort of compromise on what was acceptable. You know, we've, a lot of negotiations, but I think, um, what's before you today is a direct reflection of, of those thoughtful conversations that we had with staff. Um, we, uh, also worked alongside, um, Councilman Freddie O'Connell. And, um, we do have the support of the Downtown Partnership, the Nashville Convention Visitors Corporation, and the Planning Department. We'd also like to discuss the actual signage, um, but we'd also like to discuss sort of what we're going to be doing, um, at two hundred Broadway. Um, and just to reiterate Robin's point, we will be, um, accepting the conditions that have been, um, put on us if, uh, this project is approved. So, uh, unfortunately, two hundred Broadway has suffered, um, many, many years of neglect and a number of inconsistent alterations, uh, including the chopping off of part of the building when Sec- Second Avenue was, uh, being put down. Um, the building's also been sitting vacant for about four to five years, which has added to, um, the deteriorated state that it's in today. Um, and as you can see in our presentation, and I know that this may not be as compelling of an argument to you all, um, but it is going to take a fifty-five million dollar investment to bring this building back to life. Um, that's just to demonstrate the magnitude of the work that needs to be done on the building. Um, you know, we, this is going to be something really unlike anything that's on two hundred Broadway. Um, we're not going to be a bar. We're going to be a five hundred person plus, um, seated music venue, um, where we're going to be showcasing local, um, artists and really showcasing the creative class that makes Nashville the music city. Um, then our marquee sign is, um, a nod to the more historic, uh, theaters that we used to find in downtown Nashville, much like, uh, the Crescent, the Paramount, and the Roxy that once existed. Um, and like staff, we do believe that our signage package meets the exceptional, uh, signage modification. And we have received preliminary approval, um, for a tourist-oriented business exception, um, pending, um, our final, uh, submission. Um, and to that point, we'd be one of only three, um, buildings or three locations that, um, would have that designation. Um, you know, our signage was designed to be visually appropriate in size, scale, and massing, um, with the building. And, um, furthermore, we've taken, um, some steps, um, from the recommendations of staff to really make sure that we're protecting some of the historical architectural features, including the decorative pilasters, um, underneath the marquee. We raised the marquee in order to keep those and then replace the ones that actually don't exist anymore because the building doesn't, the front facade does not have all of them. And we'll be, um, making sure that they're there. Um, and, you know, while designing the signage, um, we knew that we also had a responsibility to Second Avenue and the revitalization efforts that are going on. And, um, that's something that we take seriously and we want to be active participants in that revitalization efforts where, um, hopefully, there's a world where tourists and, more importantly, locals alike can intermingle. And we want to be sort of that gateway onto the Second Avenue, um, district. And, um, I hope, you know, with all the examples I've given, you, you see and can understand that we really do take historic preservation really seriously. This is, um, something in the packet that we sent you. We have historic projects all over this country and the UK. This is something that we, we really do live for and we're really passionate about. Um, and we have our team here in case you, uh, have any more detailed questions. But thank you again and, uh, really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from your team that wants to have comment? Okay. Anything right now, commissioners? Okay, all right. We'll open public hearing? Close public hearing?
Robin, can you, if you know, give a little more clarity on this tourist-oriented business situation? I mean, in my opinion, everything in that three-block radius is, five-block radius is a tourist-oriented business. But I didn't know until this application, I was reading through it. Um, but just a little clarity for the record on what that designation means. I think the applicant said that they would be one of only three. Um, again, I just thought everything was.
Yes, good question. So that's really something beyond us. It's, covers the entire DTC. And at the time that the planning and, and many other people were working on the DTC guidelines for signage, we agreed to adopt that information as well. So it's the DTC, but it's also Broadway and Second Avenue. And the idea is that some additional signage or changeable copy signage, either manual or electronic, and they're just asking for manual, could be appropriate if it is a venue with fixed seating like the Ryman. And my memory is that it was never really meant to be for anything other than the Ryman. We didn't think anyone else would meet that requirement. I don't know of any others that have. Um, so maybe there are other projects in the DTC I just, I don't know about. The only one I know about is the Ryman. Does that answer?
So that, in order to get, again, since that's on our purview of what is happening in the building, but in order to get that, they have to prove that they are a fixed seeded-
Right.
-of over five hundred, you just said.
At least five hundred.
Okay.
And so they've shown that on their plans. And so, as they mentioned, it's a preliminary approval from the zoning administrator who, not, not your zoning administrator, but co-zoning administrator. And then that will be watched throughout the project to confirm that it is just five hundred, or that it is at least five hundred.
So that's not really, that's not really changing a use, per se?
The, I'm sorry.
Maybe I would get that confused. Never mind. Let me just think that through before I ask that question further. I mean, I think that's interesting about that. And it has to be five hundred seats, so I didn't really get that. Commissioner? Oh, did you have a comment?
I, I have another question for, um, for Robin and for staff. I guess, so the marquee is something different than what we've seen before. It is more than just a sign. Um, it appears to be a, uh, nine foot, nine foot six overhang projection. Does that, since it's projecting, I'm assuming into the right-of-way, does that have to go before someone else besides us? I feel like I remember from my past work that when things project overhead into the right-of-way, that has to go, um, I can't remember if it's before planning or city, I feel like it had to go before city council.
Yes, it goes through council.
Okay.
And they check all the paperwork just to make sure that there's proper insurance and that type of thing, to have something projecting over the public right-of-way.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, you go ahead. Um, I, I think because this is a pretty good detail. Uh, again, it's a new element to Broadway. And I think we just maybe should have a little pause and talk about it a minute. Um, Robin, could you just give us the details of the marquee again, just to have us hear it?
What details would you like?
Whatever you want to give us. The specifics, like- Yeah. How wide it is, how tall it is, where, I mean, we're reading it, but again, we're public hearing, so it's just probably good just to articulate it.
It may be best for the applicant to provide that for you?
Okay.
In case you have any questions.
Yeah, Brandon Johnson with AJ Capital.
Say that again, please.
Uh, Brandon Johnson with AJ Capital. Sorry about that.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
AJ Capital.
AJ Capital. So the marquee, overall height on the blue spires on either side, at the very far right, very far left, are seven and a half, or seven foot, two and a half inches tall. As Pablo mentioned, the bottom of the marquee is 15 feet above grades. We actually shifted it above to allow the green pilasters and that band that you see underneath in the visual there on the screen to be allowed to be visible to the public. And as you said, the projection in the center is nine foot six off the front facade, and then the two sections of changeable copy, it's actually like a hexagon shape, so those slope back towards, towards the building. There's a floor plan here. I believe should be in the, in the document, she could see the, the shape. So this would be the front center section with the chief's text, and then the changeable copy sections are here. And then the other side is lit, as we said, with the warm white color marquee bulbs. Any other specific questions?
Will the marquee cover any architectural features?
It will not. So it's above the green historical pilasters but below the second-floor window sills. And then the actual projection pieces, so the vertical pieces that have the changeable copy, are set off the structure 18 inches.
So we're talking 18 inches, you're covering an architectural feature?
The, the, the blue arrows, either side of the marquee is off, set back from the facade, or set in front of the facade 18 inches clear. So the horizontal section of the marquee canopy connects to the building, but the vertical pieces are 18 inches at their closest to the facade. Does that make sense?
No, yeah. Okay. Do you have any questions as well?
I have comments.
Okay, well, go. You have a comment?
Are we done with public hearing?
We're done with public hearing, but we can, we just, we just brought him up to ask the question about, about the size and dimensions, so we're now in discussion.
Okay.
Commissioner?
All right, well, as some of you all know, my entire community work has revolved in this area. I lived two doors down from you on 107 Second Avenue North for four years in the eighties and fell in love with it. I've given a tremendous amount of thought to this project, and my purview with the district, if you haven't heard of us, is that we believe that economic development is what saves these buildings. You know, if we don't have economic development, the buildings could just, you know, deteriorate and fall down, which is what has been happening to this building ever since the eighties. And so, number one, I'm delighted to see you all, AJ Capital, coming in and, and putting so much money into this building. And to me, this is the most important corner in all of Nashville, and, and I haven't seen any drawings of what you're going to do to Second Avenue, but I hope, I hope I'm going to take you at your word that you're going to make that an important part, because Second Avenue needs help, lots of help. It needed help before the bombing, but particularly now. And so, you know, if I had my wish, I wish, you know, the marquee was like a third let, third not as big, I wish the, the Old Bay windows were restored, but I understand, you got a lot on your plate with this building. And, and there are a lot of people who I respect who are, who've weighed in on this and think it's important to Nashville, too. Takes me back to Planet Hollywood, I don't know if you, you probably weren't even born then, Planet Hollywood, where everybody was up in arms about that sign there, and, you know, the sign's gone, but the building remains. Everybody was upset about Jack Cawthorn's Flying Pigs on Broadway, you know? They took it to the judge, let the pigs fly. It's a wonderful sign. And so my primary concern in this area is the building, the architectural features. And so I've given, like I said, a tremendous amount of thought. My heart is here, and so that's just, I'm probably not making many people happy right now, but that's okay. That's just how I feel about the, the buildings. And again, I appreciate what you all have done in this city to save other areas of town that we hold sacred, and so that's my two cents.
Madam Chair, I have been reading this sign application with interest because January, February, and March, now we are finally having public hearing. So since January plan, it changed, evolved, and it came up to this design. So I think one unique thing is, I may be wrong, but as far as I know, we never had marquee in downtown Nashville. I mean, I do remember, you know, Bellmead Theater, movie theater in Bellmead, so they did have, you know, marquee type of sign, but in this, you know, downtown Nashville, we never had those. So those are my biggest reservation. It may work, it may not, but, you know, so since we do have so many music venue and tourist-oriented business, you know, staff suggests if we were to approve this, we were not to create precedent, but what kind of mechanism do we have? How are we not be able to create precedent? You know, because are we keep approving because it's unique and, you know, revitalize the building? Don't get me wrong, I mean, we are very appreciative of the work, you know, AJ Capital is doing, revitalizing, you know, not only Second Avenue, you know, downtown, but many other area, and really, you know, try to work hard to preserve historical significance. You know, one, at Houston area, they are, you know, trying to preserving one significant, you know, historical building. So I do appreciate all this effort. But my biggest reservation is, are we ready to go into that area? Because, you know, we do not, in our sign language ordinance, our regulation, we do not have marquee, you know, we do have owning or sign. So it's, we are going into a really new, you know, like area we never stepped in. So I think we really have to be careful about that. So I do appreciate all the, you know, negotiation and, you know, evolution, and I think it's getting better as we, you know, discuss, but I still do have, you know, marquee itself and size, because in the original staff, you know, review, staff was worried because would it be visually jarring? And yes, because it's, that's the one of the, you know, idea having a marquee, just attract, visually attractive, you know, visually get attention from the people. So who's playing, what's playing, you know, what's happening? So that's the one point. So it's kind of, you know, idiosyncrasy of visually journeying, because that's the point of having marquee. So I'm having, you know, a really deep thought on that. And so is size appropriate? Yes, definitely better than, you know, February's plan, because chief sign was covering the, you know, second level window. It's coming back and coming down and more appropriately proportioned. But still, it's going to go up, so that will be, you know, going towards street, over sidewalk, so aerial encroachment. And of course, you know, they have to have safety and so forth, that's given, but that kind of attraction, visual attraction, especially that marquee is not historically existed in downtown Nashville. So that's the key hurdle I am really struggling right now. And as far as a sign C, you know, existing sign is, I believe, 26 feet tall, so I can see that as a, you know, grandfathering kind of way, because existing sign is, you know, as big and as tall, you know, all other thing, it can be grandfathered, if, you know, like replaced within certain period of time. So the sign C can be, although our sign regulation says up to 20 feet, but since existing sign is already 26 feet in size, I can see that is a little, you know, exception because of as a grandfathering. But I am still having, struggling, hard time accepting, you know, how not create precedent if this appropriate for us to approve that marquee considering historical, you know, significance and so forth. So I'll be interested here, you know, other commissioners' opinion on that, because it's, it's a big decision, a big change.
Yeah, thank you. I share your concerns. I have a lot of questions. I've also spent a lot of time thinking about this, reading the previous two staff reports, which were drastically different from this one, in, in terms of the recommendation. I also sort of feel like we're flying blind because marquees are not addressed in our guidelines, and it's plain that this does not meet our guidelines for signage. So we're being asked to make huge concession that we've not afforded other downtown Broadway property owners.
Duly noted.
So why, as a, as a commission, what are we being asked to do here? I also appreciate what, all that AJ Capital is doing in Nashville and with this building. I think it's going to be a good project. Is this, is this particular sign design necessary for this project to succeed? I don't think it is. The other question that I keep coming back to is, this is not just a sign, it's a giant addition on a historic facade of a building, which we do not typically or even ever allow, say, an average homeowner in one of our historic districts who wanted to build a porch where there was no porch. We would not allow them to do that. So are we elevating the interests of tourist-oriented businesses over average citizens in Nashville? I'm not, I'm not comfortable doing that. How, how, how will we look the next homeowner comes before us, and we tell him he can't build a porch when we've just allowed something like this? These are questions that I've been thinking about and concerns that I have. I was more persuaded with previous staff report to shrink the marquee to a third of the building. You know, the grandfathering, the corner sign, I can get with that. So those are, those are my concerns that I've got right now.
Yeah, I do have to say, I echo a lot of the sentiments that have been said by Commissioners Johnson and Price. Just, yeah, you know, I just, again, like Commissioner Johnson was wrestling with, well, then what? You know, we, anytime, we've known, we've been, most of us have been here long enough to know, anytime we give, you know, an inch, the next person wants to take a mile. And then it gets brought up in every report, well, here are the ones you've previously done. It's like, okay, well, and it's just tough, and I realize that this is a different building, you know, and that, you know, with this tourist-oriented thing, you know, whether or not, you know, we don't look at the purview, what's happening in the building, you know, we look at what's happening with our guidelines and if it fits in the guidelines or not. And I think, you know, again, the questions that I raised when I was looking at, again, past presentations, it is better than previous ones, it's all together now, but to me, it's just still too large. That was a really great point you made, just about homeowners, and, you know, I distinctly remember one, you know, we didn't allow her to put a cover over her stoop, you know, and I was, I still think about that, and because that wasn't on the house. And so, you know, while I agree this, you know, again, it is a different project, so if that's the way we go with it, but to me, it's just still too, too large, it's too obtrusive, and, you know, you're, you're not going to tell me that two months from now Robertson is going to come in here and say, well, we want a Brazil Billy marquee outside. You're just, you can't tell me that. And so that's, that's what I'm wrestling with. I also agree with the corner sign, that one is fine, I do agree, you know, I think just such, it is such a large building, you know, with, and it's on Second Avenue, such an interesting, prominent corner, I could get to, you know, I'm fine with the grandfathering in of that sign, but it's just this large, obtrusive thing that covers up the bottom portion of the windows on the second floor. And just, I don't know how we would craft a motion that wouldn't set a precedent or set a lot of struggles for us moving forward, and, and reasoning for other, why we've turned down so many other, for, for being five square feet over, over for signage allotment, and then this one, oh, well, it's actually, they're building something outside of it, so it's different. Well, that doesn't make sense, that wouldn't make sense to me as another business on, on Broadway. So that's.
You have a comment? I do appreciate that we're really, you know, deliberating about it, and so public can hear how we think through, you know, again, going back to our purview, and that's our purview is to be sure that district guidelines are followed. And, you know, I can, I appreciate, and we've said it, that we appreciate the developer perhaps being want to be unique by doing this, but I too am concerned about the mechanism that will come out of this for staff and how we support that decision-making and making, you know, something that it is sort of precedence. I think this is one, one project that may make precedence, and we, we really are very, very cautious about doing that, especially in historic district, especially Broadway. We have lots of developers that come in, and I say this very respectfully, but as Commissioner Mayhaw has said, she knows history, and the historic fabric of Broadway has changed, and yes, for the good, absolutely acknowledge that, but we have to pause for, for this type of a decision, for approval.
I know we're talking about Broadway, but I just keep wanting to bring Second Avenue into it.
Sure.
The, the businesses on Second Avenue, when I was down there, Second Avenue was blowing and going, and Broadway was just, you know, what it was. And then Broadway took off, and apologized to the green people around here, I'm green too, but those big trees cover up half of the buildings, and so the, the signage that those places have on Second Avenue, you can't see them. And so I just want to, I, I really feel like this is really an important corner, and, 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 and I know that we're talking about Broadway, but I think that, that you got to think Second Avenue, too. And, and so we've need, we've needed some, some, some help with signage on, on Second Avenue. Hopefully, that'll come. And so I hear what y'all are saying, I, I, I agree that, but again, I just go, I agree with what we've struggled through, every time that there's been a sign on Broadway that we talk about, and we talk about it all the time. There's always, Broadway is being inundated by, by all this because of all the millions of dollars that are being spent, $47 million for, for Paradise Park, OMG, and this man's putting in 35 or something. So I care about the buildings, I care about what y'all are talking about, I understand, I do wish the sign was, I mean, I, you know, was, was a bit smaller, so.
Well, I think what we were saying, too, just in discussion, is that whatever it was, originally, we're good with that, but maybe not so wide. I think the reason, too, Commissioner, I just wanted to say, because the, the marquee and the, the new signage, that's fronting Broadway. So we always look at facades in a more priority way than the secondary. So in terms of, and you all can chime in here, Second Avenue absolutely is important, but again, it's a secondary venue, and, and yes, we, we'll But again, it's a secondary venue and, and yes, we will support that, but again, you know, our purview, I just keep going to our purview because that's the safe way for us when we have a mechanism to say to another applicant, this is what we've done. And again, I appreciate what Commissioner Price has said, is that the applicant would say, well, what, you know, was that fair to the other ones that we've said disapproved to? Those are the inconsistencies that our commission is very aware of and that we're very careful on how we make decisions. So I just want to remind ourselves of that because we are very careful and we appreciate the development, that's absolutely, you know, well given. But I think there's a, go ahead.
One more point. At me, before the pandemic, Acme, Feed and Seed was number one Uber destination in the city. They are that way and that successful because they have such a good product, not because of big signs, they've done a wonderful renovation and they have been very, very successful because of that. And so, you know, I'm hoping whatever we decide here today about this sign, that it does not deter you from realizing the value of this property and what you can do with it and what I think that you will do with it and, and hope that you will. And so I just wanted to kind of make that.
Thank you, that's very well said. And also, you know, hearing, if the applicant can hear that, you know, there's some compromise to some of this and to, when I say compromise, let me say that very loosely in terms of following as best to the guidelines as you can in your design, so that we are not compromised on what we have purview over. Again, you might want to be unique, but we are held to a certain standard and it's been years in the making, it's not just today. This is commissions before us that we stand on the shoulders of, so we want to hold those recommendations and approvals or disapprovals. So don't take this personally, but it is what our purview is, so, and we take that
So I'm hearing, although we do appreciate all the effort, especially preservation of the building and especially try to, you know, restore a nice, what do they call, the horizontal, you know, decorative thing on the wall. And so they did submit really nice restoration plan, you know, back in last year. So we really appreciate that effort. So for that, I think I'm hearing this sign, especially marquee, this size is kind of destruction from nice restoration plan. And also, you know, good business does not have to be, the sign does not bring the people, rather, business or business practice bring the people. Like Ryman, you know, they don't come, people don't go to the Ryman just because it shows who's playing on the wall, rather they buy, purchase ticket. So they do purposefully come to Ryman. So in that sense, I think, you know, we don't have to rush to approve this gigantic size of marquees right now. So I think there's more room for improvement. If applicant, you know, wanted to keep working with staff and then maybe, you know, make the sign, marquee smaller, like one-third above the entryway or any, you know, other modification would be okay, but I think we're leaning towards, we are not ready to approve the sign as submitted today. That's what I'm kind of guessing.
And Commissioner, are you, are you saying also the sign and the marquee, the sign being on the marquee? Okay. Marquee, you meant, because the sign does go on the marquee as well? And also the sign allotments, you know, have our overage?
So I think, you know, in this case, sign and marquee becomes as a set. So if applicant just wanna, you know, approve one corner, I think we are leaning towards okay with that, you know, projection sign in the corner as, as a grandfather in, even though it's a larger, but marquee is the one we are kind of struggling. But in this case, marquee and the sign is as visually set, so if applicant decided to walk on different route as far as marquee goes, maybe the projection sign might change. So that's what I'm trying to, yeah, leaning towards.
I just want to point out that Leila's Bluegrass Inn has a marquee and it's big, it's grandfathered in. Jason Aldean's has, looks like a marquee, I don't know if they use it like a marquee, but it's projecting out over the building. And that was before the overlay happened. And so I just want to let you know that there are a couple of marquee type, types on Broadway.
Whoever's going to make this motion is going to have to add some points there. So just think about it a second, you know, because we've been talking about the marquee and the signage and really what the recommendation here is one and two is the applicant is willing to, you know, go with that. No bare bulbs on any signage, no red bulbs on the underside or the bare bulbs on the underside of the marquee. So one and two is covered, but what our discussion has been is in addition to that. So whoever is articulate in, in proposing the verbiage.
To that point, Chair, I don't think it's our, I don't think it's on us to design this for them in this meeting. I think we've kind of made what we're comfortable or uncomfortable with kind of clear and depending on how the motion goes in the vote. But even the, the staff recommendation says, staff recommends approval with all the conditions of one and two or disapproval. So that would be just kind of a, if we disapprove, it's just, you know, they can kind of take what we've got, but I'm not, I don't think anyone here is ready to take a vote of, no, it's going to be, it has to be one-third or, these are just kind of thoughts from the commission, but I think it would just be a approval with conditions or just disapproval.
Approval with conditions.
Is the kind of our two options here.
That's exactly.
With, again, notes from our talk here going forward.
Which we have done in the past in terms of.
Yeah.
Our motion, you know, our motion would be a revision or addition or an edit, so.
In that note, you know, following the Commissioner's comment, I think it's our job to design, assign or marquee for the applicant. So applicant heard our discussion, so they might be willing to bring back this and then redesign or if they're willing, or if they are not, we have, like you said, we have approved with, for condition or disapproved. So maybe it's not our job to design, so may ask applicant if we are willing to defer and continue work with the staff?
Let me ask staff as well. Staff, hearing our deliberation, how would you see us?
That's completely up to you.
Yeah.
You have an, an application before you and you can vote on that or you can ask them if they'd be willing to defer?
Yep.
I'm, I'm not real interested in deferring, I'd rather make a decision today.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else want to chime in on that? You know, again, I, I think when, when we see that and just keep moving forward, let's just see how it goes, okay? So who's willing to make the recommendation?
Yeah, again, I think this all comes back to, to our guidelines, which are based on Secretary of Interior standards for historic buildings. I, I think this, the marquee, for as big of a structure as it is and being a sign, it doesn't, it doesn't comply with the guidelines. I'd like to see AJ Capital continue to work with, with staff and come up with something considerably smaller that does meet the guidelines. And for that reason, with respect to 200 Broadway, I recommend disapproval.
Is that, that's a motion? Okay, that's a motion and there's a second to the motion, all in favor of the motion. You opposed? There is one opposed? Okay, and since we have majority, then that motion passes. So thank you. Continue to work with staff, please.
Let me ask, Madam Chair, it is 4:30.
Thank you, sir.
4:25. You mentioned maybe taking a break after four.
Would you all like to take a 10 minute? We have a full, probably another hour or two. You want to stop at five?
Yeah.
Oh, what, I'm sorry, you still close at five? I mean, stop at.
No minute break.
Oh, five minute break, okay. Okay, well, how about we'll take a seven minute break, okay? Because we have to get there.
Allowing for full basement level at the rear. This is an addition that the commission approved back in 2021. So according to the drawings, the historic house measures approximately 19 feet 9 inches from the top of the foundation. And then if the ridge raise is included, it's 21 feet 9 inches from the top of the foundation. Here is the proposed dadu. The proposed ridge height will be 24 feet 6 inches tall from grade. In comparing the height of the historic house to the height of the dadu or outbuilding, the commission has typically compared the two proportionally rather than by grade to ensure that an outbuilding is compatible with historic primary building and applications are reviewed consistently. This is to ensure that lots where the slope drops significantly, the outbuilding is not artificially tall in comparison to a house as seen from the street or that unusually tall building placed on the alley or against a shared property line. Also, it ensures for that those lots where the slope rises significantly, so in this case, you can see it's kind of going down, but on this, there are many lots where it's the opposite, where it's much higher in the back, that those people are getting less just because they slope up. To ensure that lots and houses are treated similarly, the commission has measured the height of the house on the top of the foundation line and it is the foundation height that varies most with grade. The height of the historic house, sorry, I meant, there we go, again, is about 19 feet 9 inches from the top of the foundation or 21 feet 9 inches if you're taking the ridge raise into consideration. Sorry, lost my place here. Staff in this instance, although we typically don't take the ridge raise into consideration because the height of the house is fairly small at 19 feet, we thought in this case it could be appropriate to, to count the ridge raise just to give a few extra feet and to therefore recommend that the dadu be no taller than 25, 9 feet inches. Again, here is the site plan overall, I mean, the design, the setbacks, everything meets the design guidelines, it's just the height, the maximum height issue, the eve heights are fine, setbacks are fine, materials are fine, dormers are fine, it's just the issue of the overall maximum height. Just some background information, in the Belmont Hillsborough design guidelines, there's just three paragraphs that are italicized, the original part of the design guidelines that talk about outbuildings. And they mainly say that the outbuilding should be compatible by not contrasting greatly with surrounding historic outbuildings in terms of height, scale, roof, shape, form, materials and details. If you look at historic outbuildings, they are typically one story and one bay and probably don't fit a modern SUV. So, you know, the commission over the years has interpreted, has kind of expanded the interpretation to allow for outbuildings that are larger than what you would have seen historically but still compatible with the district, just to make sure they're meeting modern needs because an outbuilding from 2022 is used differently, you know, than an outbuilding was in 1960 or 1938. Oh no, there we go. So here's a slide just showing kind of different ways if we were going to measure this house using the foundation, or, again, this is a different house, but just as just as an example of, you know, kind of the things that we've struggled with in terms of making sure that outbuildings are, are not overly large compared to the historic house, particularly when they're significant grade and there are a lot of lots in Nashville with significant grade, we all see those every day. So, you know, at the top, you're seeing the outbuilding, you know, in comparison to, an outbuilding in comparison to the primary structure if it's, you know, if it's just measured from the top of the foundation versus on the other side where it's, it's much, you know, the top you're seeing it kind of, I'm sorry, I got that backwards, the top is you're seeing it without the, with the grade taken into consideration and at the bottom, it's kind of more even as if, you know, the lot didn't slope, kind of comparing the height that way from the top of the foundation. So it is something that staff has struggled with and, you know, tried to over the years come up with a way to make sure it's equitable and make sure that, you know, outbuildings, particularly ones that may back up to other houses or across the alley, that an outbuilding not be overly large compared to kind of other surrounding, surrounding buildings. Let's see if I missed anything. So again, we're just trying to make sure that outbuildings don't contrast greatly with the, with the neighborhood character and one solution that we've come up with is to take the measurement from the top of the foundation, again, just to kind of act like there is no grade involved for whether or not the grade's going up or going down, to kind of make it equitable for all lots. So staff is recommending approval of the dadu with the condition that the height be reduced to 21 feet 9 inches from, from grade or from top of the slab. It's kind of not that much of a difference in this case and that we approve all materials as we typically would. And with these conditions, staff finds the proposed dadu meets Section 2B of the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough conservation zoning overlay. The applicant is here, he has a presentation himself, but I'm happy to answer any questions about kind of what we've done in the past. You know, there were times where we would maybe measure from the four corners, but more recently, we've really tried to kind of measure from the foundation line just to make sure, again, you're treating it, it was almost like it's a flat lot, even though there are no flat lots in Nashville, so.
Any questions to Melissa?
Thank you. Applicant?
So you should just be able to slide that way. Okay, thank you so much. I have paper case, always the worry that technology will fail you. Thanks, sorry about that. Good afternoon. I'm Ryan Schink fellow, I live at Tintin Gilmore Avenue, which is Waverly Belmont. I own the property with another gentleman who couldn't be here, he's on spring break, right with his kid. He's at 920 Lawrence Avenue, again, Waverly Belmont as well. We both own a construction company that will be doing the work in addition. So as always, super appreciative of staff, they're an amazing resource, very, very helpful. You know, sometimes you don't always agree with everything and in this case, I respectfully disagree. I think I can clearly demonstrate that our request is firmly grounded in prior decisions by this commission and denial of this request and our requested height would be arbitrary and we'd hope that we would get our permit. This issue, the, the commission went through a great discussion on in July of 2021 when unanimously found that the dadu at 1501 Cedar Lane have the following condition, that the ridge height of the dadu less than the ridge height of the house is measured from sea level and be no taller than 25 feet in height. That's what the guidelines say, that's what our requested height would meet as y'all discussed at 200 Broadway, like what are the mechanisms, what have we done in the past? And that's what we're looking for here. This is in the packet, but essentially, if you're looking at what was granted at Cedar Lane and if you're looking at the sea level, you can clearly see that the dadu here, ridge height, is beneath the ridge height of the historic house at 2906 that's been approved. So this is what's been approved, this is our height as we've requested it, it is well below that sea level, which I appreciate the sea level analysis, I know that's difficult from, you know, phrasing, but I think that helps out a layperson to understand. So I'm going through my presentation here, that's what I just showed y'all. Again, as one of the commissioners pointed out, that 1501 Cedar Lane hearing, measuring like this is somewhat arbitrary already. Staff has taken several different approaches with respect to allowable height, I think that was just mentioned, that they've done different approaches to try to reach equity. The way I viewed it is that this commission has set a pretty, pretty clear standard, which is sea level is our sort of default and then staff has been super great about working with the different grades to allow someone, like on the other side of Belmont, the odd number addresses that are uphill, to not prejudice them to have the ability to still have a dadu that would be considered, you know, a lesser, right, subservient structure to that. So the different four areas where I've seen measurements being taken, we, I've seen measurement from the grade to the top of the ridge of the rear addition. And by say, these, these approaches are either in a permit or a staff recommendation. So that first one, measuring from the grade to the top ridge of the rear addition, that would meet the commission's sea level approach. Measuring from four corners of grade, which the commission's talked about and, and in the very back of my presentation, we would meet that as well. Measuring from front grade, that's been several of addresses within this same. Measuring from front grade, that's been several of addresses within this same overlay. And then no real discernible measurement taken at comparing the ridge height of the house to that of the dadu because, as in our instance, that dadu has been so far at the bottom of a downsloping lot that it was very clear from C-level that the dadu was beneath that of the original home. So, you know, we've done a fair number of projects in this area, you know, or these different surroundings areas. And so we had a pretty reasonable basis of where we thought this dadu would lie coming into the project. We just finished one of the same height, thereabouts, at one block over at 3004 Belmont. And so it's sort of a surprise to us, but again, I think we can get that solved here, hopefully. So just in summary, and I'll go through a couple of the other projects. I've seen, you know, many different approaches taken, but I'm going to point to the Cedar Lane where the Commission was pretty clear about, you know, look, you've got to keep it beneath the principal structure at C-level, and let's keep it under 25 feet. And that's what the guidelines say. And what our request is, and the reason we think it should be granted, is we meet the guidelines insofar as our ridge height. Our dadu will be a ridge height less than the primary structure's ridge height, and it will be no taller than 25 feet. And as you can see, these are a couple of other demonstratives here that'll show, you know, if you're looking from Belmont Boulevard, you'll clearly see that the dadu is beneath that. The ridge of the dadu is beneath that of the house. And then it's a little hard on this PowerPoint, but you'll see it in there too. From the alley as well, we're a good nine feet at least below when you're just looking at it from C-level. And I know that Melissa pointed out, apologies, Mr. Ballack had pointed out that, you know, looking at, you don't want this to be looking too much higher than other structures in the back of the alley. That's not applicable here because there's a T-shaped alley, and that alley goes all the way down to 12th Avenue. So again, just reiterating, this is what was found at the Cedar Lane hearing from the meeting minutes. Ridge height, no less than the ridge height of the house, measured from C-level and keep it under 25 feet, which is what we've asked for. And I've highlighted a few of the things that were part of the discussion at the Cedar Lane hearing. And then I'll just briefly kind of go through a few of the situations here. 1209 Elmwood, here's the big one, staff recommendation, which was approved at Commission. They use the back of the house and the downsloping lot to come up with the measurement of the primary structure. That's 22 feet there, and that allowed a 22-foot dadu. So if you're putting them side by side, our request is in line with that. That's again, that's 1209 Elmwood. That's showing all the measurements, and all those tables are taken from staff reports. 2402 Belmont, again, this one was taken from grade, and we have a 24 10-inch. So it'd be the same, approximately the same height, within a few inches, ours, I believe, a few inches less dadu. We've got Beechwood here. Again, we're using a top of the foundation in the back, and they're adjusting grade, which I can appreciate staff doing, right? Accommodating folks on a change in grade, and again, a proper dadu because it's under that 25 feet. 2804 Oakland, again, dramatically downhill, it appears on that grade. We're looking at an existing house being considered 24 feet and a proposed dadu at 23 feet 9 inches. But the only way you would get there is not by measuring from finished floor elevation, as the staff has recommended here, but by doing a four corners of the grade or just saying, hey, C-level. Clayton Avenue, this is measured from front of grade, as you can see, not from the foundation. 1701 Primrose, you know, heights from grade. Cedar Lane. 1903 Beechwood, again, that would only be 21 feet, but we have a, I believe, is that a 24-foot, something dadu? So, 921 Sweet Brier, again, not the same from grade measurement. So finally, just as an alternative, you know, if we use the four corners approach and measuring from that ridge, which is the, if you look at the historic application that's online, they have a principal structure, height of principal structure worksheet that says, look, use the four corners of grade. And I have a table of the measurements here based on our design that would, again, that would average at 26 feet, and we're asking for under 25 as in the guidelines. So we would meet that there. And I'll leave a little extra time, but again, the general summary being, oops, sorry about that. The general summary being that the clear precedent was set at 1501 Cedar Lane, and all I'm asking for is that same approval with the same condition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Open public hearing? Seeing none, closed public hearing? Commissioners?
I guess I have a question for Robin or Melissa perhaps, but I know you went into how, you know, that it's been a struggle and how measurements are, how and where measurements are taken. Would you say, you know, again, just looking through the applicant's presentation, I don't know if you've read it or if you agree with it, you know, if these are correct, you know, we kind of have to take them when we get them in the meeting for what they are. But, you know, with some of the previous decisions being kind of on different bases of measurement, you know, I guess just what is it, staff's recommendation that kind of we start just doing it one way? You know, from one, like there's a line in the sand now, or there's so many have come in recently? You mean, there's been a lot, but I don't know, this is a question.
I can start, and then if you want to jump in. I think there is some comments that the guidelines talk about C-level and that we've always done it by C-level. Before that Cedar project, we never mentioned C-level. What the guidelines do say is the dadu or outbuilding shall maintain a proportional mass, size, and height to ensure it's not taller or wider than the principal structure on the lot, proportional. And so that's how we were doing it. And that's italicized information because, again, what we really have is just those three sentences. It says the roof ridge height of the dadu or outbuilding must be less than the principal building and shall not exceed 25 feet in height. So again, to us, it seemed logical to go by doing it proportionally. So measuring the house from the top of foundation to the top of the ridge and then comparing that to the outbuilding as built from grade. We have done it by an average of the four corners for quite a long time, back in the day, before we faced with a lot of huge outbuildings and additions. And we ran into things like, there's at least one incident where someone asked for a huge addition so that they could make the argument to get a larger outbuilding, and they never built the addition. So it's fine, that's great, they didn't build the addition. But again, it was telling us that doesn't work. That's not truly hitting the proportional aspect. So where there's an issue with you being arbitrary is going back and forth, doing it one way one month and doing it a different way the other month. So this is how we've been recommending it for a little while now, I'm not sure how long. And this is our recommendation going forward as well.
I'm comfortable with that explanation and reading the text of the guideline itself where it doesn't actually mention anything about C-level because it's problematic when there is no one C-level. I could just as easily argue that C-level is at the front grade as at the back grade. So I'm comfortable with the current recommendation and how we've been doing it recently. I can remember last meeting, I think we had one where we held at the same standard of from finished floor height, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, any other comments? No? Architecture? No, it's fine. Two and a half hours. Commissioner? Very far right, very far right.
Yeah, I've been struggling with this one here because the applicant is, I serve on the board with him, and I'm afraid that my vote might be tainted with how I, the high respect I have for Mr. Stringfellow. So I would like to, permission to abstain from this vote?
Okay, Commissioner, we'll abstain from this vote. So we have four?
I do remember this Cedar Lane case. I think this was one unique case, probably involved with some kind of miscommunication. So after lots of, you know, questioning, we took, at the end, we kind of made exception for that one. And because of the C-level height, because of the really unique topography of that specific parcel and that really kind of go down in the back of the house. So therefore, in this specific case, 25 foot would be appropriate. I think we were kind of persuaded by the applicant in that, you know, discussion. So in that sense, I mean, you know, I have seen the Belmont, this neighborhood analysis and staff, is it staff to report 500-something pages, you know, of the dadu? And it shows every single house except, you know, Cedar Lane was, historical structure is higher than dadu as far as height is concerned, 24 versus 239. And none of the dadu structure is higher than, you know, historical structure. Whereas, you know, 1501 Cedar Lane was, historical structure was lower, and dadu was higher. That's the only one exception. So in that sense, I'm kind of, you know, of course, we do follow the guideline. And, you know, it's, that's a design guideline because proportionally and, you know, it should match up with that, you know, context. So historical structure is 24 foot, you know, dadu should not be higher than 24 foot. So that's, you know, giving, in that sense, 21 9 inches is a historical structure. So therefore, dadu height should be 21 foot 9 inches. That makes sense. However, with this, you know, detailed research and site-specific exception, I am a bit struggling. I'm kind of rather persuaded by, you know, applicant in this specific case. Maybe other commissioners may feel different, but so that's where I sit right now.
I think we're, again, you know, you loosely say inconsistencies of how we've looked at it. I think, again, this board is very sensitive to the site, being site-specific, and really digging into the details about that. So just saying that it's inconsistent, it's not really inconsistent, but because of how we deliberate on a specific site. So we've always been pretty much making our decisions by what we are presented with. So, you know, again, we always do the best we can. And we're not always perfect, but we do try our very best to follow our guidelines and also, again, to support the staff in the way that mechanism works for them to talk to applicants and how to move forward on a project.
I'll add to that, that I think the staff does a good job of offering compromises in these and that they're willing to measure to the height of the ridge raise rather than the historic home is, I think, a good faith effort and giving an applicant in a case like this some room to get more height even though we're measuring from a modern part of the building. So I think this is a nice design. We're talking about three feet of difference in staff recommendation. I think that it'll still be a good, successful dadu if we approve the staff recommendation. So I'm comfortable with that.
Any other Commissioner, or we do make a motion?
Yeah, I think that the one slide that Melissa pulled up, just with the different grades and how, you know, it has been an ongoing thing and just as very recently, just the dad, you know, keep getting bigger and bigger, and historically, these outbuildings were small. Now, okay, yeah, you can have two stories and park three cars in there and do, you know, have living space upstairs. But so I was swayed by Melit, that one slide of just the showing the grades and, okay, well, if it's, you know, again, the 1501 Cedar Lane was a specific case, and that's what we decided, but that is how the Commission works. But that has really persuaded me of, if it's, I mean, say you just have this drastic change, you know, can it be a four-story tall thing in the back, you know, I don't, just that has swayed me. And so again, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Price on this one and for staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll just add that the intent of the, is for the, you know, size of the dadu not to overwhelm the size of the principal structure. And this dadu is clearly taller than the principal structure, you know. We take a lot of, you know, where we focus our efforts, a lot of our efforts is the front primary elevation of the house, and this exceeds the height of the house. It's why we do a one-story dadu for a one-story house and a two-story dadu for a two-story house. And this is reaching two-story heights in a one-and-a-half-story form. So I agree with staff recommendations.
Okay.
Well, with that, regarding 2906 Belmont Boulevard, I move to approve the dadu with all staff recommendations.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second. I will ask legal, since we have four, do I need to vote? Since five is a quorum?
Right, you need four total.
Four votes total, so we're good with them if they agree. Okay, all right. I do not have to vote. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay, we have one opposition, so I will carry with the motion. Okay. I am going with the three, going with staff recommendation. So that is four votes to one. We're good with that. Thank you so much. Thank you, applicant.
This next one is 1109 Petway Avenue. The applicant requests new infill at 1109 Petway. The house at 1109 Petway Avenue was a circa 1915 contributing home in the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. In 2020, the home was completely destroyed by fire. The MHZC issued a demolition permit for the remaining debris in November of 2020, and the site has since been cleared. Today, the applicant requests new infill on the vacant site. Contributing houses on similar-sized lots that make up the context around 1109 Petway Avenue range from one to one-and-a-half stories are between 15 feet and 26 feet tall and between 25 feet and 33 feet wide. The historic house at 1109 Petway Avenue was a one-and-one-half stories home, approximately 26 feet tall and 32 feet wide. Staff finds that a home with a maximum of one-and-one-half stories, maximum height of 26 feet, and maximum width of 33 feet may be appropriate for this site depending on the overall form and massing. This top image in this slide shows the two contributing houses adjacent to 1109 Petway Avenue. And you can see 1109 Petway Avenue there on the right before the fire. The middle image shows the historic context across the street from 1109 Petway Avenue. And the bottom image shows historic context across the side street from 1109 Petway Avenue. The proposal for infill on the site includes a primary residence that is to be a duplex and an outbuilding. A setback determination is needed as the side setbacks for the primary residence and outbuilding on the North 12th Street side of the lot will be 11 feet, which does not meet the base zoning setback of 30 feet with a 50% reduction to 15 feet as described in zoning ordinance 171230(c)(2). In addition, because the proposed building is wider than the historic context, the rhythm of spacing does not meet the historic context. Staff finds that side setbacks do not meet Section 5(c)(2) and bulk standards for the street-side setback. Staff finds that the proposed infill is two stories with a ridge height of 28 feet and eve height of 20 feet, significantly exceeding the height of the contributing surrounding context, and 44 feet wide at the street, significantly exceeding the width of the contributing surrounding context on similarly sized lots. Staff finds that the width and heights of the proposed infill do not meet Section 5a1 of the design guidelines. The footprint of the proposed outbuilding is 1,012 square feet, and the lot is 9,000 square feet. Therefore, the footprint of the outbuilding exceeds the 750 square foot maximum that is allowed for lots under 10,000 square feet. Staff finds that the proposed outbuilding does not meet Section 7b1 of the design guidelines. The appropriate height for the outbuilding cannot be determined, since staff finds that the primary building does not meet the design guidelines for height. And the wall heights of the proposed outbuilding are 17 feet from top of finished floor slab. These wall heights exceed the wall height of the guidelines, that the guidelines allow for an outbuilding behind a primary building that is one or one-and-a-half stories as recommended by staff. Therefore, staff finds that the proposed outbuilding wall heights do not meet the design guidelines. Staff recommends disapproval of the proposed duplex infill and outbuilding dada, finding that the project does not meet Sections 5a1 for form, 5(c)(2), and 5(c)(4) for building setbacks, 7a3, and 7b1 for outbuilding footprint, 7b2 for outbuilding height, 7b4 for outbuilding massing, nor 7(c)(2) for outbuilding setbacks of Part 1 and the Eastwood chapter of Part 2 of the design guidelines for turn of the 20th century districts. And I can take any questions while I'm up here, but I believe the applicant is here as well to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joseph.
Good afternoon. My name is John Root. I'm the principal and owner of Root Architecture, and our office address is 753 Alaway Street. We've been working with staff over the last three months. My staff has been working with them on this home design to try to comply with the various comments and concerns that everybody has with this home and with this location, and obviously, there's sensitivity there because the house burned down. We were notified very late last month of Councilman Withers' concerns, and we opted to defer last month to take a chance to talk with him and discuss those concerns and walk the site again and take our time with it. I think we've just now about satisfied almost every concern that he had, he's going to speak in a minute, I believe, with the single exception with the scale and massing is too much on the main home structure, and that's what I'm here to talk to you about. To simplify our discussion today, because there's a lot there, let's just table the discussion about the dada, because the dada is directly connected to the main house scale and massing. I think in, if we can agree, if the, at the end of the day, if the house is, a two-story house is appropriate here, I think the dada meets all of the rules of the commission on the dada. So is the house design too large here? I, no, I don't think it is too large. When we think it's appropriate for the 60-foot wide corner lot, but it's, not only is it not too large, I think it's necessary. My company and my staff, we're all local to Nashville, and we're neighbors here. We've been working in these historic neighborhoods for a long time. We try very hard to come up with innovative ways to design a variety of different housing options into historically sensitive products, and this proposal you have before you is really no different. This isn't something completely original or really creative. You know, variations of this particular design have actually been approved by this board over and over again and all over town. Salem Town, we designed two homes on Fourth Avenue, 1727, 1729. We did one somewhere in the Waverly Belmont neighborhood at 916 Montrose, and that was actually a mid-block property that was surrounded by one-and-a-half story homes. And actually, in my opinion, I think it turned out really great. And then recently, we just completed a project on the southwest corner of McFerrin and Seymour Avenues, not too far away from this project. We had larger duplex homes designed on the corner, and then we slowly transitioned the scale down to the one-and-a-half story context around it. And I think that project actually turned out really well, too. Look, larger corner homes, when done correctly, bring a lot of character, and this particular concept brings a mixture of housing options into a neighborhood that really needs it. I think it's important to remember that this is a conservation district and not a preservation district, so let's keep that in mind when we're discussing the severity of some of the little guideline requirements. This street is zoned differently than 98% of the Eastwood Conservation District, and so I think special consideration should be made here. It's at the very northern edge of that district, and these properties are all zoned RM20. It was always intended to hold more residential density than it currently does today. This particular property was actually first zoned RM in 1974. So its higher density uses were not only common at that time, they were, in fact, the context for this particular history of the neighborhood. Because this pocket area is so different, we must look at all the entire context, not just the historic context. And because this district is fairly new district, and this property is on the northern boundary of the district, I think special considerations should absolutely be made. There are two-story apartment complexes all around us in every single direction. We have a two-story Eastwood Apartments to the north, Urban Housing Solutions. We have a tall commercial building across the alley that Trevecca owns in that footprint. There's a new two-story town, non-contributing townhome project directly across the street from us on 12th. And if you go down 12th to the south, you'll see a larger two-story multifamily building that was built on the corner there. We are also 400 feet away from Nashville, one of Nashville's multimodal corridors, Gallatin Avenue. So there's a lot of different special exceptions here in this situation. In addition, I'd be remiss to not mention that three homes away from us, we have a new construction build that's 40-foot wide and two stories tall, that's fairly close to this proposal we have before you. We've worked with staff and a long list of items to meet these guidelines, and we've now placed a lower-sloped roof on this latest revision in front of you today to limit the look of this home down to two stories instead of the two-and-a-half that we originally asked for. I agree, we were probably potentially pushing it a little bit with the two-and-a-half-story foot height, but I think, I think we've been working with staff and the councilmen and everybody involved, and I think the scale is now appropriate for what we're proposing today. So in conclusion, 60-foot wide corner lot width can absolutely hold a bigger house. Larger two-story and commercial contexts are everywhere around us here. Corner lots need big homes. I'm an advocate for that. I think there's examples all over Nashville for that. Larger homes are typically found on corner lots. This project brings a diversity of housing into a historic neighborhood and minimizes its vehicular footprint on the neighborhood. So I think those are also great points, that we're able to get everything on the lot, and we're not spilling over into our neighbors' yards. Except, for the exception of the setback reduction, which, in fact, because we are RM, we have that weird 30-foot setback requirement instead of, if this is a R6 lot, it would be a 20-foot step back and we would meet it. So it's a little bit tricky there, but I think what we're asking for is not too terribly off-putting. I ask that you please approve with conditions, this revised design with the typical requirements that staff usually puts upon the projects of staff approval of windows, doors, HVAC roofing, block height, et cetera, and all siding will be no more than seven inches in review. That was a comment in the staff report. I want to make sure that gets in there. As always, I do appreciate the volunteer effort of this board, and I'm here for questions. And I think Councilman Withers wanted to say a couple things. Thanks.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, not at the moment. Thank you, Mr. Root. We might ask you questions later. Thank you. All right, I'm going to open public hearing, which our council member will be first.
All right, well, thank you so much, Commissioners. I think John has actually done a really good job of summarizing just about everything I was going to say, but I didn't know if staff could pull up the portion that shows the property map? I know it's in the staff report itself, but I didn't know if it was in your slide presentation? Just to give a sense. And that will do, that's kind of perfect. So I think this, to John's point, the architect's point, when comprehensive zoning was passed, most of, my understanding is most of East Nashville over to 14th in general was all boarding house zoning, which is what it was. A lot of stuff in this portion of the Eastwood neighborhood was originally boarding houses for Auto Diesel College. And that was the case well into the 90s. I think Auto Diesel College started building their own dorms and things like that, and this particular pocket, for whatever reason, was not downzoned to the R6 that the rest of the neighborhood was. It was left at RM, although it was later on changed to RM20. Nevertheless, there, when we were going through the expansion effort for Eastwood, which I personally knocked on all these doors, I live right behind it on Granada, so this was my quadrant of the neighborhood. But folks that lived in this area were very interested in the conservation overlay. Many of the houses were, including this one, I mean, you had homeowners that had been there a long time, weren't always able to maintain the homes, some of them were getting into bad shape, and there was a lot of concern that they would lose all those houses. And so the historic preservation of the houses themselves was definitely top of mind. But in this area, being so close to Gallatin, the density question was not. I mean, a lot of Eastwood is more of a cottage neighborhood and has a much more of a cottage feel, but this portion has always been a busy area of the neighborhood with the Kroger store nearby that's been there forever, and we have lots more things nearby and there on Gallatin than we used to, and actually more positive uses than we used to today. Kind of as John mentioned, today, parking, on-street parking is at a premium. On Petway, from folks wanting to support the new bars and restaurants and businesses that are lining that portion of Gallatin, and I live there, never thought I'd see the day that you'd have all that there, but it's a busy area. And this portion of the neighborhood was one that definitely wanted to preserve the historic structures, but not in a way of limiting density per se. The effort to expand the conservation overlay, at that time, Eastwood's overlay, you had to go all the way to the, to 16th Street, and it was the east side of 16th Street. So when you think of the doors that I had to knock, you had to come all the way from 16th, all the way to 14th, and then all the way over to here in order to gather feedback from folks to get this portion of the neighborhood in, and in order also to meet the requirements of contiguity of a district. You know, I had to talk to all the property owners, and so Rusty Lawrence, who lived in our neighborhood, who was in charge of Urban Housing Solutions, is one of the folks that I talked to, I said, you know, in order to make this contiguous, we're going to need your support as a major, major property owner, and what do you think? And he says, well, you know, of course, I live in the neighborhood, I support that, although he did so with the understanding that all of the buildings that they own, which are right behind this, are non-contributing structures, they're all two-story. You know, if something were to happen, they would need to meet the design guidelines in terms of design somewhat, but it would, it would be difficult to retrofit them in a way to meet like a one-and-a-half story context per se. So this, this particular location has, does have different zoning, it does have a different feel, and it has really, really different context than the rest of the neighborhood. We definitely want to preserve the historic structures. I knew the homeowner who lived in that prior to it burning, and it's a shame that we lost that structure. I hope we don't have any more fires. But I, it's, this, this lot is one where I don't feel like we're, this is going to, you know, be a precedent for other lots, even in that area, frankly, because usually have something on them. As the architect mentioned, just down the street, 1101 Petway, it had been a vacant lot forever, which had tires and all the things that you used to have on vacant lots in East Nashville. An applicant had come after the expansion of the overlay, and I did speak in favor at that time of a duplex that is a full two stories, we have a shallower roof pitch on it, very similar to what I asked John to do for this one. But I think that sort of bookends this block context a little bit, where you do have a full two-story as new infill with a lower pitch. And so I am supportive of the height for this one, and I appreciate the architect working with me to reduce it. Overall as well, I mean, one thing that I will say for this, this design is, you know, sometimes we have a lot of apprehension in our neighborhoods, especially about the second-story balconies and things like that, and sometimes they kind of appear almost stapled on. And one of the things I like about this design is I think that there are some outdoor spaces and porch spaces and even second-story balcony spaces that are really well done. I think the architecture on this is really thoughtful and enhances the character of the neighborhood, the mass is a little bit larger than what's the contributing structures around it, but I think it's very artfully done. And so I'm generally in favor of the project in terms of the side setback on the 12th Street side. 12th Street is in desperate, desperate need of sidewalks. We have large numbers of neighbors, particularly who live up there in the Urban Housing Solutions area, who don't have cars, and they are walking to get to the bus stop, and they're walking to get to Kroger and other services. And so we, it's a street that is a high-priority sidewalk need. This project will be required to add that side sidewalk, which is important. And for me, in looking at that side setback, that's, I mean, I get, I do understand the reason for the 15 feet, but one of the things that was persuasive to me in looking at the site plan is that from the side of this building, between that and 12th, there would still be 11 feet plus a nine-foot sidewalk allowance for a four-foot planning strip and a five-foot sidewalk. And so I think that that is, that will feel like an appropriate amount of room in that context for what a side setback probably should be there. So like I say, there are some other things that maybe could be tweaked, certainly, but I definitely appreciate the architect working with me to reduce the pitch on the building. I thought, actually, the design was really great, but it's just when you have a two-and-a-half story form and everything else is one-and-a-half, I think that really stands out, whereas there is a lot of context surrounding with, with full two-story forms, either for the one, like I mentioned, at 1101, which has a shallower pitch, and definitely a lot of other kind of mid-century two-story apartment buildings with, with different roof pitches. So it's just an eclectic little area, and I think it's, it is a unique opportunity to add, I think, one additional housing unit on this location and in a creative design that is a little bit larger than context, but I do believe enhances the surrounding area. So I'm willing to speak in favor. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Counselor. We appreciate your time and patience for waiting for this project to come up. Anyone else in the public to make comments? Okay, closed public hearing.
Excuse me. I don't know, I'm struggling with this one. I guess the beginning, when I was looking at this prior to the meeting, I just, I mean, I immediately thought it was too big, and I completely agree with the staff recommendation. But, you know, hearing from John Root and Councilman Withers, you know, the one who's so active in this area, you know, the immediate council member and resident of this area, you know, now it's a little, you know, convoluted in my mind. And I still think it's too, I mean, again, we've been working on taking immediate context as a commission, so that is one thing that we really have done a lot more strictly, is the immediate historic context, and the immediate historic context is one story, one-and-a-half story, excuse me. So, you know, this full two stories with this full two-story dada on the back, it just feels so large to me. Again, I'm not trying to redesign this building in this meeting, but I would be interested to hear what other people have to say.
You, Commissioner.
I share your concerns, Commissioner Jones. To me, we've been pretty consistent lately with infill needs to meet the immediate historic context of contributing buildings. I recognize that there are non-contributing two-story buildings nearby, that doesn't enter into our calculus, has not in recent meetings. The rendering on page 33, the last page of the, of the staff report, it's just massive, especially with this enormous duplex. I think it's too big for the spot. I recognize the need for more types of housing and multifamily duplex houses, but it's something I'm sensitive to. There's one on Holly Street that replaced a tornado-damaged house that I ride by a lot, and it's, it's too big for this, and we, you know, we approved it, but I think it overwhelms its neighbors. I think this is an overwhelming design also. And based on our recent meetings and how we've been approaching these, we've been very consistent about holding to the immediate historic context. So that's what I would do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I do appreciate, you know, Commissioner.
I do appreciate, you know, Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Price's comment. I too feel the same way. You know, first time when I read the staff report and see the rendering, and it's a bold and creative plan for sure, you know, try to squeeze in three units and with, you know, dadau. So actually, three housing units plus, you know, one additional dadau. So it's really maximizing the space to utilize that space, you know, maximum utilization. And yes, I do agree, design is nice, but overall content, massing and height, understand surrounding area, but I, I too feel it's still too big. I think it can be done nicely with a little bit smaller scale, and it doesn't have to be 44-wide, it doesn't have to be 28 and six, 20-foot and six inches tall. I think it can be done, kind of shrink a little bit more, and then fit nicely in the neighborhood, yet provide nice housing. So I am leaning towards staff recommendation in this case.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Chair, the applicant has requested to come back in.
Okay, well, give us a moment then. Oh, you want to explain something that we're addressing?
Oh, yes. If, if it would be easier for the commission, we could remove the dadau and come back and keep working with staff on that, to simplify the ask, if that helps the commission.
But it is included in this presentation, though, correct? The dadau is included, so. Yeah, let us discuss that. Thank you.
I'm, Minnesota was going to say before, but I'm, I'm in agreement, in agreement with the other commissioners. I do think the applicant and, and the, and Councilman Withers have presented a compelling, compelling argument, because when you look, you know, when you look at where this is located, it's located kind of in this corner, you know, corner, there's a little pocket of the, of the overlay, and it's kind of on the corner of this little pocket. And there are, you know, taller buildings to the east, northeast, and, and north of it, kind of plant, plan east, plan northeast, plan, plan north of it. And so I do find that compelling, but the fact is that it is in the overlay, and those are non-contributing buildings. And so I, I, I'm in, in agreement with the other commissioners just about the, looking at the immediate context, kind of of the street, what's next to it, what's across the street from it. But I, I appreciate the design, I do think it's a, I mean, it's a good design, I just, I think the scale is too overwhelming for that street.
And I would say, you know, because of what Commissioner Fitch just pointed out, you know, is on the corner and is on the end of the, you know, I would be open to certain, you know, leniency or a little bit, but I just feel like it's, it's all just too big. Just, just, again, the word overwhelming, you know, it's just a little too big, but, you know, I would, I'm sure with something else, some new design, you know, I would see about maybe a little bit, but, you know, maybe one, I don't know, some concessions a little, just because of the, but again, just this current, I can't, it's just, it's too much of all the things.
I'd like to see a replacement application for a story and a half duplex, that we could make some setback, you know, concessions in that, but the overall form, I, this reminds me of one recently we had on Porter Road, right next to Cafe Rose and Greenwood, that we sent back to the applicant twice, because this exact same issue. So, I'm, yes, so with that said, in regard to 1109 Petway Avenue, I move to accept the staff recommendations.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a second? All in favor of the motion?
None.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you for the discussion. Thank you, applicant. Thank you, Counselor.
This is an application for the demolition of an existing non-contributing building and the construction of new infill. So here is the existing building at 209 Broadway. As outlined in the staff recommendation, the structure dates to 1950 and was constructed on a vacant lot where a three-story building once stood. The yellowish brick veneer, the lack of window headers, and the wider window proportions all mark this building as later than the historic structures in the overlay. As the date of construction, the materials and the design are not consistent with the historic character of the district. Staff finds that the proposed demolition meets Section 5 of, of the design guidelines. So the proposed infill will be five stories tall with a height just below 65 feet. There will be a recessed partial sixth floor that reaches a maximum height of 80 feet. The proposal meets the guidelines for height and massing. The design includes an appropriate street-level storefront system and ample fenestration on the upper floors. The infill meets the guidelines for setbacks, rhythm of openings, roof shape and orientation. A sign is shown on the proposal, but there is not sufficient information for staff to fully review that sign at this time, so a full sign application must be submitted separately. Final review of materials is recommended, including a brick sample, the storefront bulkhead material, the metal paneling, and all doors and windows. The applicant is proposing large, multi-pane industrial-type windows with sections that function as casements and swing out over the street. Casement windows were not used on historic structures in the Broadway district, and as such, the commission has determined in previous cases that they are not appropriate for either replacement or infill within the overlay. Window types that could be appropriate include fixed windows, operable sash windows, so single or double-hung windows, or windows with sections that operate as hoppers. Let's see examples here. In conclusion, and please note the corrected recommendation language in all caps, staff recommends approval of the proposed demolition and infill with the following conditions. One, casement windows are replaced with another window style that meets the design guidelines. And final review and approval of materials prior to purchase and installation, including a brick sample, storefront bulkhead material, metal paneling, and the final selection of all doors and windows. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposed demolition and infill meet Section 3 for new construction and Section 5 for demolition of the Broadway Historic Preservation zoning overlay. If you have questions.
Thank you, Melissa. Applicant?
Some handouts here, too. Good evening. Curtis Lesh with Tuck Hinton Architecture and Design, and I really appreciate the time that you've been here and deliberated, and appreciate staff's time as well and effort. And we have, over the last several months, worked on this project with staff and gone back and forth several times on a handful of issues to, to make sure that it meets the design guidelines. With one final sticking point being the casement operation of the windows. And what I would propose to you firstly is with the, with new construction, so we've been involved on, with several buildings on Broadway that were renovations of existing buildings. This will be our first new construction project that we're involved with on Broadway. But as we look through the, the guidelines for new construction in Section 3, we find as, as it relates to windows in Section 3 GP, that, that new construction should be consistent with existing buildings in terms of orientation and proportion and rhythm of openings, which I believe staff agreed that we, we met that. And then in Section C, which is guidelines on scale, which I think is important to point out, that it says that the, that windows, doors, openings, and that word I'm not going to attempt to pronounce, should be visually compatible with surrounding buildings. So as we understand it, that guideline refers specifically to building scale and elements of the building's scale. And then in Section 3F of new construction, there's a few other references to windows and their visual compatibility. And then on their doors and windows being recessed on the masonry buildings, which is our intent and design. That is slightly different than Section 2, which is rehabilitation section, which specifically mentions, in a few instances, in Section 2H, the operation of the windows and trying to either replicate what was there previously or maintain the existing windows in existing buildings. So our, we don't believe with new construction that the intent is to replicate any one specific historic building. And then secondly, as far as the casement window operation is concerned, casement windows were around, certainly in the late 1800s and early 1900s, so historically appropriate from a, from a time period. And while in the very small sample size of the Broadway overlay district, they are not found, there are examples further up Broadway at the Masonic Lodge and also at the First Art Museum of Steel casement windows in, and you see that on the second page there, a couple of examples of some of the original drawings of the casement windows. And then numerous commercial buildings of the period in the United States with casement windows. So if, if this had been built in the late 1800s or early 1900s with casement windows, I don't, it would not have been out of the ordinary for the time period. And then also, just wanted to point out that we did evaluate the, the use of the hopper window, which is a, as opposed to a casement window where the sash opens out, sort of like a French door, the hopper window would pivot, you know, horizontally. And what we, what that hopper window operation did was it created headroom problems with the sash that, that came into the building. It also, it also blocked sightlines and the ability to actually get up to the window to stand next to it because of the, the sash would have projected kind of into the headroom in the inside. And we had significant concerns about the overall durability of the hopper window and its safety being used in the, in this bar, restaurant sort of setting. Finally, the window style, we believe, does create a visually compatible facade, which is what is, is written in the, in the overlay. And with the, only the operable sash of a larger window is, is what we're proposing to have that casement operation. And that operable sash is only occurring in less than half of the windows that are on the facade on Broadway and also on the east facade, which avoids the, the appearance of, if you look on the last sheet, the appearance of the large sort of windowless kind of openings that you see in those other examples that are, that are currently on Broadway. And then when closed, there's really no visual difference between the casement window that we're proposing and a, a hopper window that was suggested by staff. So with that, I, we respectfully ask that you approve the casement operation for the windows. I think everything else, as staff has found, is appropriate to the guidelines. And, and we believe the, the casement operation also meets that for new construction within the overlay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think one of our commissioners said they didn't hear your name. I think you were with Tuck Hinton, but.
Yeah, Curtis Lesh.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant at the moment? All right. Open public hearing. Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Jim Daniel. I represent the Marriott Moxie Downtown, which is a next-door neighbor. And our building on Broadway was built at the same time that this building was, and we share three walls in the first, second, and basement, perfectly good walls with this building, and on the other side, bootleggers is the same. And when we were building our building, we were told that we couldn't demo because we were in the, in the Broadway or in the, the zone down there. And what we did is we went back to the drawing board and we put concrete shear walls throughout that building, so that we could brace it and, and operate and add more on top of it. And right now, what we did is our building was built at the same time, and the face of brick on our building is the same as the yellow brick on this existing building next door, the Trail West building. And we painted ours to make it look more of an older look. You all allowed us to do that. And we have a problem with just tearing down a completely good building that was operating until these new people bought it. And the person that owned it prior to that knew that it, the, it was in the zone, in the footprint when he bought it. So it would have been cheaper for us to knock the whole building down that we're in right now and go back from the very beginning, but we adopt, adapted, and we made it stronger and used the, the building that was already there, and then added any upper floors on top of the shear walls that we started off with. And our, that building is twice as wide as our building is on Broadway. So there's plenty of room for them to add shear walls in that, that existing building and stiffen it up, and then put any building above it on top of it. And we have a real problem with the fact that we did what we were supposed to do, and knocking down a building, a perfectly good building on Broadway that's been there for 75 years is, that's not a good thing. That's not what you all, your job is.
Appreciate your comment.
Is to make people, make people to be able to adapt and, and do with, with shear walls or whatever it takes an engineer to say.
Thank you.
What you can do.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Good afternoon. My name is Seth Harland. I'm with Robin Realty Company. I've worked downtown for 12 years. My company's been downtown since 1947. We actually know this building well. We managed the property for probably 30 years, sold it about five or six years ago. And I think my confusion with this, I'm a little bit perplexed on how this is not considered a historically relevant building. You know, it's over 70 years old. I think we've never seen in, in my career, a building torn down on Broadway, except for 219 Broadway in this block, and I think everybody was probably against that. It was a controversial project, and the end result is not what we want to see on that block. And I think there, there's two things that I would point to. About 16 years ago, the Weston Hotel looked at this block, a plan was approved, they were going to do maybe 20, 25 stories, but the requirement was that all of the buildings on Broadway maintain that historic facade. I think in my office, we have a rendering that shows this yellow brick-laced two-story building as part of that project being preserved. So I think you've got a track record of this building being considered historically relevant. And I think another commissioner mentioned that Second Avenue is a gem for downtown. It was alluded to earlier that all the buildings on the west side of Second Avenue, the facades were taken off when they widened the road, and that was about the same time period. You can see in the windows, they're kind of industrial windows versus the arched wooden windows on the east side of Second Avenue. And yet we adore and preserve the east side of, the west side of Second Avenue as historically relevant buildings, so I don't see how this one.
Thank you for the public hearing. A closed public hearing? Commissioners?
I guess I'll start with a question from that public hearing information. Again, who decides what is contributing and not contributing, I guess is the question? And if something is considered non-contributing according to X, you know, that is out of, kind of out of our purview other than what would be built there, correct? Or-
Actually, you can, you know, look into it and you don't have the research here in front of you, but you could certainly make the determination that it's contributing. We just, I'm quite frankly, a little shocked. I didn't think anyone cared about these buildings. They, they've always been talked about as demolition. He talked about the Weston project, they were going to be demolished for Weston, this and the building to the left. So I just didn't know anyone considered it historic. We don't look at just age, we also look at the character. And this is clearly a veneered brick building, not an actual brick building. The Moxie was reconstructed because there was a fire. This building just isn't like anything else in the district. But, you know, if the applicant's willing to defer, we could always take it back and look at that. But we, you know, for so many years, it's been considered non-contributing.
Just to expound a little bit on that, the language contributing, non-contributing comes from the National Register. And so when a National Register district is listed, it's got a period of significance that says this is, the dates, that the significant buildings in the area were built. And there's always a cutoff. And I imagine, I don't know what the cutoff is for Broadway off the top of my head, but it's probably early 20th century, well before this was built. And this doesn't share any of the, any of the character-defining features that are more well-known for the buildings that are-
And it wasn't even included in that nomination.
So it's not included in the nomination either. Right. So, just to give a little more context there.
The other question too, is, you know, when you do demolition, that we're concerned about the, like the one on the right-hand side of this particular picture. Page three of the report, how is that? Do we make recommendation to say, how are you shoring up that one side so that building doesn't have any impact structurally?
Are you talking about the red brick building-
The red brick building on the right.
Public comment was brought up. If I'm not mistaken, I remember that building because it's connected to a historic building on, is that third?
Yes.
Yeah. So I don't remember, I don't know the specifics of the case that was brought up at public comment just now. I do know that it's connected to a historic contributing building, and that may have had something to do with how that decision was made to deny demolition of this immediate neighborhood. But I, but again, I don't know, that's just conjecture.
I guess that's probably just to be sure we're not compromising any other buildings that are standing, because our experience from Second Avenue is that, you know, those adjacent structures are impacted, historical or non-historical, but they are impacted. So, what building is that one on the right? This brick building?
The Moxie.
Is that the Moxie? Okay.
It's the rear sort of building.
Right. So, just in terms of a structural concern, anyway, just bringing that up.
In general, just moving along, I like this project. I think it's a good one. I can see why this building is considered non-contributing. I think the five-story design with lots of windows fits the site. I don't have any great opposition to it and tend to support the staff recommendation. With the exception of the windows, I'm willing to discuss more about accepting casements here, for the reasons that the applicant argued that they are. It is a historic window type that is found further up Broadway. I was going to ask specifically why hopper windows wouldn't work, and I think your answer sort of anticipated what I was already thinking, that people are going to knock their heads into them. And the fact that they'll be closed most of the year anyway during the hot months and the cold months, if it's like my house, I love having the windows open, but there's about a two-week period in the spring and the fall that you can get away with it anyway.
You probably haven't been down on Lower Broadway.
Well, okay.
It's all open all the time.
Yeah, well, okay, never mind. But, so I think overall it's good and I'm willing to consider casement windows in this situation.
And if you don't mind, if I could add to that a little bit, because there's been so many requests for this and we just want to make sure that we're consistent and that we're addressing people who may want to come back and then ask for them, was that, one, the building on the last page, I think it's the last page, you did not review? That was built, or that was redone? Sorry, one of the ones, the one on the right, 221 Broadway, you did not review?
Kid Rock.
So that's, no, the Kid Rock. So those type of windows were not something that this body allowed. And so everybody wants everything to be really open. And yes, some of those buildings that were maybe more office-type buildings further up the street might have had casement windows. The high school there, I'm drawing a blank on the name.
Hume Fog.
Hume Fog, thank you. Had sort of, not really casement, but a similar type of window. But these were all retail establishments and warehouses, and we don't see evidence of that type of window. And again, if allowed here, a lot of people that have asked for it in the past are going to be coming back. So just something to keep in mind.
Okay.
I guess on, on the topic of casement windows, and I think that actually the images at the, at the end of the presentation that was handed to us kind of show my concern with casement windows, is because downtown, in the bars, it's hot, they're open all the time. They're open in the winter, they're open in the summer, they are open all the time. And they significantly, significantly alter the look of the building when they're open. It's a, it's a different look when they're always open than this historic nature of the building when they're closed. So I understand staff's recommendation against the casement windows.
That, yeah, that's an interesting point. And Robin, I'm glad you said that we didn't approve that one, because I was, I was going to ask a question of what's so different about just having a wide-open, you know, what is then having it open a little bit as in a casement style? So that answers that question. I guess my second question would be, you know, the difference in it opening this way versus this way, is that this way was in, in the district pri, there's historical context for this way versus this way?
So the, this way, the hopper windows, were generally not the entire window. They were generally just a piece of a more industrial-looking window. So that's what we were thinking would be appropriate there, could be appropriate there. The casement, the whole window is open.
Okay. And then for, since again, there aren't, as the applicant and everyone's mentioned, you know, we don't have a lot of Broadway infills, are, just from my recollection, because you might obviously remember them, were previous requests for casement windows on, like to replace a window with a casement window, or was it for the rooftop additions to have casement windows, or?
My memory is both.
Both, okay.
And in the past, I know we've, we've considered newer window types or different window types for new construction, but have drawn the line that if you're remodeling a historic building, we wouldn't allow that, that sort of replacement. But, but point taken, Commissioner Fitz, I think that's a good point that you made, that it does, it does alter the streetscape considerably.
You know, personally, in contrary, I, you know, casement window, even though open, does not really bother me, because building itself, you know, the brick color, material, and window framing and such, those are kind of character defining to me. And when it's business is not open, window will be closed, so it will kind of keep the integrity of the look. So in that sense, you know, casement window, not entire Broadway will, you know, jump into casement window and open up. It could happen, but, but either it did happen, it really does not bother me in that sense, because, you know, we are preserving the old building and historic, but at the same time, kind of introducing a new technique and a material appropriate with a historical, you know, structure. So in that sense, I am not really opposed to that casement window. So going back to the building, I am surprised to see opposition of the demolition because of the staff recommendation, the staff report. I thought it was outside of, you know, National Register District. So I thought it would be appropriate for us to consider demolition and then rebuild with more historic in turn. So I think the plan is good, and I am sorry to hear, you know, some sentiment, because some people really would like to keep either way as is. And sometimes because of, under the circumstances, some application may not happen that time. Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that. But in this case, I am inclined to staff recommendation excluding, accepting applicant windows of choice.
Thank you, commissioners.
Well, I, you know, I walked down there last night, looked at that building, it, it has no, no meaning for me as far as the architecture. It's pretty drab. And I really like the replacement. I think it'll be a fine addition to the street. That's just how I feel.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion, or anybody want to make a motion?
No, I'm struggling with this casement window, because I don't want to go back on things we've said before, which again, I can't think of off the top of my head. But, you know, I'm trying, I just, you know, again, with the new world we live in, you know, this, you know, all these, I don't know, you just, you know, to me, just it opening horizontally versus, you know, it being okay to open horizontally versus not okay to open vertically, just in my mind, it kind of doesn't make sense, because it's still, if the main thing anti, against the casement window is not to break up the visual of the facade, you know, that, I feel like that, that's doing, it's doing the same thing. So that's in my mind what I'm struggling with, but I don't want, you know, all these people to rush and, oh, you didn't give me this, because I don't remember previous ones. And again, you know, this is a new infill, I do feel like there are different, you know, I would never, like we said, never even think about it for, hey, we want to replace all of our windows with the casement windows. That's an absolute non-starter, but with this new structure, so I don't, I am struggling with it, that I don't want to cause some sort of precedent that we didn't foresee happening. But generally, I do like it as an option, just for fresh air into the building.
Can I provide just a little information, because I don't think I explained it very well? If you see on the window at the bottom, it's not the entire window opening that's open, it's just a piece. But with casements, it's the entire opening. And this may not matter, because you may feel all comfortable with them, but if allowed, you will be asked next month for it on a non-contributing building. That's something we're in the works with.
Yeah. And I'm seeing here, just again, that it looks like it's on two floors. Again, maybe the architect, it looks like they're being called out on two floors, just if you want to.
Yes, that's correct. And I would also point out that it is not the entire window, that it's two sashes of a larger window. So it is more consistent with the, you know, the hopper window idea of being a operable sash and a larger window opening.
So for, I have one more question. So for this, this call-out in red here, that one, it would open, that in red would open like this?
Correct.
And then the one next to it would open like this?
Correct.
And then above the, those bottom two pieces that would not operate?
That's right.
And then those would be the same on that whole row and then two levels above?
Yes.
Just for clarity on what it is on this building?
I think in the handout, there's the, the operable sashes are highlighted in sort of a teal color, if that helps at all. And you can see what, you know, what's operable sash versus fixed window on those elevations.
So an acceptable window type would be double-hung, right? What is, I don't see in the, please point me to the, in the guideline where guidelines talks about acceptable window types. Is that, sorry, I've just been here a while and I'm a little-
It's okay. It's all right.
Consistent.
While you're looking, so, you know, just a note to why we're deliberating on these windows, is because it's a major part of the facade. And so, it is contemporary design. So anyway, again, deliberating and making sure that we're double-checking ourselves for that decision.
And I've answered my question, Robin. Thank you.
Can you answer it out loud?
It's under this new, new construction and scale on page 5, 3C1.
Read it.
The size of a new building, its mass in relation to open spaces, and its, and its windows, doors, openings, and appurtenances should be visually compatible with the surrounding buildings.
The assumption is historic, yes?
I think so, yes. That, that staff has taken the position, which I don't disagree with, that the types of windows figure into that language. I'll make a motion if, unless there's any other discussion.
Yes, Commissioner.
Again, I think it's a great proposal. At this point, I am ready to move for approval of the staff recommendation with the conditions that an acceptable window type be found for the building.
Staff recommendation. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one opposed. Is that one, two, three, four? So, that's still good, right? We have four.
Four.
Yay. Four yay and one.
Oh.
One, two, three, four. It's still one, two, three, four.
Sorry, sorry. I said aye, but I have a question.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question while voting?
Can we just, can we, you want, we should vote and finish the vote first?
Well, it-
And then we'll, we'll discuss.
Accept.
Right. Okay. So let's just get, I know it's been a long day. So, Commissioner, we have one, two, three, four.
Just a second. Your question is clarifying question about the vote, correct?
Is it about the vote, Commissioner?
It's about the vote and how we're voting.
Then, I think we-
Okay, what's the question?
Should reconsider the vote and then ask for the clarifying question.
Right. Do we want to restate? Is that what I'm hearing?
I just wanted to ask a question.
Okay, we had a motion on the floor, so we would need to move on that?
Then move, and then I'll ask my question about how we're voting.
Legal? Please help.
Sorry. Go ahead. It's appropriate to discuss now that you have a motion on the table.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can, I can talk. No, my question is, if someone, do we need to break, are we able to break this into two votes? Because I'm, I'm not positive, but I'm thinking, I'm thinking Commissioner Jones is maybe voting against the recommendation for the windows. But you were in agreement for the whole project otherwise.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I love the project, I just kind of-
So is that, is there a way to break up the votes, so that we're not like stalling at all?
I think it's going to go y'all's way anyways.
Okay, never mind.
But, but that is mine. That is, I like the project as, as presented.
Like when there's, when there's multiple conditions, or there's a whole project, if you're, if you're voting no, but then you're just only voting no of one piece of it, but you're in support of all the rest of it, it just makes the voting messy. Am I being, am I making any sense? It's been a long day.
Yes, so let me read-
You're not even voting no.
I'm just voting against the motion, which was to accept, you know, so.
The motion was to approve- The motion was to approve per recommendation, one and two, right? Per recommendation, and there were, so, we were voting yay for the, second, who seconded? Commissioner Mania? You know, so then we were approving, so are you still good with that vote? All right, so, we have four for the motion and one nay. And that is the majority vote. Good, all right. I think we're good now, right? Okay, so we, that motion passes. So do you have any other questions, Commissioner?
I mean, I'm not gonna hold it up now, but it's, it's, well, but I'm gonna ask the question. Like in the future, if, if two of us had said no, just because of the windows, then it wouldn't have passed, and then the whole project wouldn't have passed, when people were in support of the project, but it was differences in opinion of one of the conditions. So, but we don't have to figure that out now, because we've got a whole lot to do, but that's where I was going with that question.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
It's a good question.
You have six numbers present, right? So with four approved, then?
Four approved, then it passes. Correct. And we have one opposed, so I think we're moving forward? Thank you. Okay, thank you applicant. Thank you for your patience, because it's been a long day again.
All right, the next item is 1012 South Douglas, and we got word that Commissioner Fitz has recused herself from this item. So the application is to demolish an existing rear addition, to construct a new rear addition that is both taller and wider than the historic house, and to construct an outbuilding. The house at 1012 South Douglas Avenue is a circa 1914 Victorian cottage that contributes to the historic context of the Waverly Belmont neighborhood. So the plan includes demolition of existing shed and hipped roof portions at the rear of the historic house. Since the portions to be demolished are located at the rear and have visibly different cladding material from the historic house, staff finds that the partial demolition can be appropriate. Since portions of the rear wall and roof plane will be removed to accommodate the addition, staff recommends that the partial demolition is accomplished manually. The applicant submit a shoring plan prior to permitting and that there be an inspection after the shoring is installed. So the addition is located at the rear of the historic house, and the proposed outbuilding is located in the rear yard. Both structures meet all base zoning setbacks. Since the lot is 70 feet wide and the historic house has shifted to the right side of the lot, the subject property meets the criteria for when a wider rear addition can be appropriate. The rear addition extends wider than the historic house on the left side, and also rises three foot six inches taller than the existing house. Since the grade rises from the street to the rear of the property, the site meets the conditions when a taller addition may be appropriate. As designed, the addition has a one and a half story form with eve height similar to that of the historic house. The additional height sets in at least two feet from the side walls of the historic house, and the additional height is designed so that only roof is visible from the street, and so that the new construction does not sit directly on the, on the roof of the existing house. However, the design guidelines limits additional height to a maximum of two feet above the main roof form of the historic house. For this reason, staff recommends that the additional height be limited to a maximum of two feet taller than the existing house. So section six B three of the guidelines states that an addition may not be both taller and wider. However, with the condition that the addition is no more than two feet taller than the historic house, staff finds that the inclusion of the taller and wider components can be appropriate in this case, since the addition is not both taller and wider at the same point, and since the wider portion is appropriately scaled and primarily glazing. So the footprint of the addition does not more than double that of the existing house, and staff finds that with the condition that the addition not extend more than two feet taller, the project can meet the guidelines. The proposed outbuilding also meets the design guidelines as proposed, here are the front and rear elevations and the side elevations. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions: one, the addition shall be no more than two feet taller than the historic house; two, the final details of the steel siding, inside porch, floor, and step material be approved prior to purchase installation; and three, any new utility meters should be located on the side facade of the building. So with these conditions, staff finds that the project can meet the design guidelines.
Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Melissa right now? Okay. Applicant, thank you for your patience.
Good evening, I'm Dave Bronner with Pfeffer Road Architecture, representing Pfeffer Road Architecture and our client and homeowner, Anne Day. To begin, I think I've got a letter from Anne that she wrote. Unfortunately, she's unable to attend today, she's out of town for a procedure, but she shared a little intro, and then I can sort of talk about some other things there. So, Anne's letter reads, "Dear MHCC staff, when I bought this house 14 years ago, I instantly fell in love with its folk Victorian charm and its beautiful 14-inch-thick brick walls that I've been told were built by the original owner, a brick mason. I also felt fortunate to have purchased a larger than, a larger lot than most on the streets, so that I could have plenty of space to garden and expand, expand one day, being eight minutes away from downtown in Nashville is just hard to beat. I've loved living in 12 South all these years, watching the neighborhood change, and have sometimes worried about it losing its historic character. I recently married and am hoping to start a family. Needing more space, we've begun discussing possible designs with my longtime friend and colleague, Jamie Pfeffer from Pfeffer Road. Our first and foremost concern was to preserve the historic beauty of the original house while bringing a contemporary aesthetic to the addition. We love the way this design brings these two elements together. As a landscape architect, I care deeply about design and the integrity of the neighborhood character. I'm very sorry to be out of town for a medical procedure, but hope you will look favorably upon our project. We are committed to completing a beautiful project that will be a credit to our, to the neighborhood I love, and we value your input. Thank you for considering our applications. Warm regards, Anne Day." Just take a go? All right. I mean, over, thanks. All right, so again, thank you for the opportunity today. We've really enjoyed, as always, working with staff on this project. We first started talking with the team, the staff team, probably two years ago, pre-pandemic, and with the pandemic, it's sort of stopped and started, and, you know, we always love the collaboration and really think the, the current design, where we've come in the past couple months, working with a team is really better than anything we've presented thus far to them, and so, sorry, yes, I lost my place there for a second. We wish, sorry, we've gotten where we are through all the, the collaboration with, with the staff. Through this process, we've been able to agree and resolve all staff comments, except for one, which is why we're here today to discuss it a little bit more. It's a 16-inch height variance that we would like to discuss and hopefully get approved. So, next slide. As you can see, the site is the one in the middle with the black box, it is a 70-foot wide facade, which is, or 70-foot wide lot, which is wider than most in the neighborhood. So that allows us to build to the side, as Melissa already discussed. We are fortunate to be, to have a talented landscape architect as a client, and a good deal of the design concept was centered around how to use this wider lot to create a dynamic and layered landscape experience that complements the original house. The architecture concept was rooted around removing the addition and preserving that front, front historic piece of the, of the, of the building, the folk Victorian home. The new addition uses a one-story sort of connector box to connect the original home to a, another one and a half story volume behind it, clearly separating new versus old, historic versus contemporary. And it's really light on this, I don't know, hopefully your screens show up a little bit better. Sorry? They can see, okay, great. But you can see this is the two, second story plan, and we've really compressed the massing, the volume behind the existing home, trying to push any added height above one story behind the roof line of the original home, and the areas that poke out to the west of the original home are, as Melissa said, one story and primarily glazing. And next slide is a true roof plan showing, showing the two forms there, with the original one and a half story house to the front, the lower one-story connector box, and then a new one and a half story addition behind that. These elevations highlight our approach to clearly separate those two, those two pieces, and really let the historic piece shine and the new contemporary addition shine as well. And again, hard for me to see, but I think you all can. Up high is the existing facade of the, the street elevation, and the second, the lower elevation shows the one-story addition started to peek out to the side on the west, and then there's a line between the chimneys that, thank you Sean, I appreciate it. There's a, a line that represents the, the height of the roof of the, the new one and a half story massing beyond, you can see it's very clearly, we're trying to tuck that behind the existing piece of the building. And the whole reason we're even here is because this is, as we've discussed on others, and I'm not gonna go into lengthy precedent decisions, and really just want to focus on, on this site at hand, is that we've got 13 and a half feet of grade change from the street on Douglas to the alley in the back, and, and not in our favor in terms of height. So you can see the alley is, is much higher in the back, and our, our approach here was to really, really just kind of stair step in, the rest of the buildings were, were proposing on the side of the addition and the, the new building in the back, and gradually step up the hill, trying to keep things down as low as possible. And there's, so, back up. Existing section, section with a new addition, with the addition that wouldn't comply, could conform to current MHCC guidelines, removed, with a new building addition coming across the back, and then we've got an elevation along the, the western facade there. That's where I'm gonna look at Sean again. This one shows that, that site section, and it's a little bit of a esoteric slide here, but the shaded area on the right, closest to the street, is a projection of that front gable, what you would see from the street. So that, that crosshatch mass there shows what the front elevation gable looks like. As you're sort of going back into the lot, the secondary crosshatch in the back is the form of the new one and a half story addition in the back, and as you can see there, we're trying to play, use the same proportions height of the building and the eaves and ridge lines, and kind of just turn that 90 degrees and use that again back of the house, and push it behind the existing ridge line. And to sort of abstract that a little bit, the diagram on the right, the existing house sort of shows, or shows the, that, that front gable that I was talking about existing, and then our new massing in the back, and showing that they're the same height, which is 22 foot seven from, from grade, except for the new piece is up, because we're moving up the hill towards the back of the lot. Make sure I haven't missed any of my talking points here. I don't think so. Roof plan diagram showing the areas that are above the two-foot recommendation from, from staff, and it's really that, the center ridge on that new piece going vertical and horizontal that, that are in violation of that two-foot recommendation. And so we're, and showing those, those view sheds from, from the street as well there.
Three seconds.
Sorry, we're going. All right. Existing house addition, addition that's going away. Existing house, lots of landscape in the front and the back, and you can see with the rendering here, we're really just getting a little bit of that roof volume in the back that is actually visible from the street. We're planning on keeping all the front vegetation, and in conclusion, I'll flip through a few more of these, we are, we think that the significant topographic change on the site, the removal of the non-conforming addition, limited volume extending beyond the existing structure on a wider-than-average lot, and the extensive mature screening of landscaping that's being preserved, the lack of visibility of the new massing, of the requested variance exhibit exceptional consideration that only the commission can grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Were you gonna speak as well? Okay. Time is up on that, so, thank you. We may have some questions for you, though. Open public hearing? Close public hearing?
I do have a question in terms of your rendering, so looking at the original house, it's the brick, just careful, the brick is orangey, but you're, yeah, and then your brick is darker.
We're not changing the brick.
Okay.
It's just a computer graphic.
Just want to make sure.
And this is, this rendering, we've stripped out a lot of the landscape, so you can actually see the proposed massing beyond, or ghosted it out.
Right. Just want to make sure you weren't painting it.
We don't want to touch, we don't want to touch the existing brick.
Okay.
And we're not adding any new brick that would...
Okay, good.
Contrast with that.
Good, thank you. Can you put up the one where we can see the elevations of the new construction to the historic drawing? So we can, there.
This guy?
Nope.
That one?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioners?
Did you open and close public hearing? Sorry. It's me, it's me this, it's me this week. It's always one.
Yes, I closed public hearing.
Okay, it was me.
Put me on point.
Yep, I mean, I'm, I really, you know, looking through these renderings, I want to live in this house. But beyond that, I have no relation to this house at all, by the way. It just is a really interesting project. I really appreciate how the architect has completely separated the, I don't know, just made it to where it ever was, just really respecting the historic building instead of, I mean, again, all sites are different, but, you know, instead of a ridge, ridge raise and all these things, you know, that can be done to houses that, again, just, I don't know, I think the respect for the current historic house has taken great care to do. I would be interested in hearing other comments on, you know, again, with people, you know, with the deep, you know, going back down and sloped from front to back versus going up and slope from front to back, thoughts on that? You know, this, on page, this is 11, if you, page 17 of this presentation, is, this, that was kind of the one to me that, oh, never mind, it's in our, never mind, it's in our packets. It's the one where there's just like this, the tri, the...
That didn't make the cut here, but...
Well, it's in our packet, that's what I'm looking at.
You gotta edit it out.
It reads as if, and again, I have to take this as, it's from the applicant, so you have to take that if it's true or not, which, you know, but just if that seems to be the case of there all are the similar height, but it's just being affected by the, the raise in grade, but again, I'm gonna read through it some more, but would be interested to hear other Commissioners' comments on it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I also think it's, it's a great project. We have typically held applicants to the two-foot rule, unless there's, I don't even remember when we've not done that. I kind of think it's a stretch to call the historic house a story and a half house, and the, the addition is approaching two stories in scale. We're talking about a one foot six inch difference, I think, here. I would be more comfortable... I would be more comfortable, I'm, I'm more comfortable, uh, approving the staff recommendation, holding to two feet. We've seen a lot of these in the past, where people requesting more, we, we consistently ask for holding to the guideline as written. So that's what I would do again. Again, I, I love the contemporary form, um, but I think it needs to come down more to, to be in line with how we've, what we've held other applicants to in similar situations. I hope people understand, we're always talking about precedent for a reason because as soon as we give one, we'll get five more the next month. So, um, that's what we're, we do our best to be consistent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I totally agree. I, I mean, I, it, it is a, a nice design and unique and the separation is appreciated. However, I think our guideline is guideline. And just because it's separated uniquely does not mean we can allow extra, you know, one foot six inches. So if everybody is fine with that, I'm ready to make motion to accept staff recommendation on this, uh, item.
Oh, you've made the motion. Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second to her motion?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor of the motion? Okay, so one, two, three, there's four. Any opposed? No, cuz it's the only one, all of them. She abstained. So we've got one, two, three, four voting unanimously. So the motion passes. Get these unusual abstains, so I just wanna make sure. We've had three commissioners less, so we, kind of a rare moment. So, okay. So that motion passes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, applicant.
Thank you all.
Sorry, gotta get to my presentation. There you go. Okay. Thirteen twelve Calvin Avenue is a pre nineteen oh eight folk Victorian house that contributes to the historic character of the Lockland Springs neighborhood. The house is located the southwest corner of Calvin and North Fourteenth Street. The application is for a small rear addition, alteration to a window opening and for new dormers. First, the applicant is proposing to, uh, where the area where the pergola is, is to create kind of a, um, more of a roof and a roof form over that patio area will remain open. They're adding a chimney and a open fireplace, which all that staff, staff finds to meet the design guidelines. Second, the applicant also intends to change a single window opening to a triple window opening on North Fourteenth Street. Staff does not find this alteration to be appropriate because it is highly visible from North Fourteenth Street. Moreover, the historic windows are largely single tall double hung windows. And this triple set of windows does not match the pattern and proportion of windows on the rest of the house. Staff finds the proposed demolition of the window and door openings does not meet section three B one D and three A four of the design guidelines. Moving on to the dormers. The applicant is also proposing dormers on the side and rear. On this north, north Fourteenth Street facade, staff finds that the dormer scale is larger than what is typical, what a typical historic dormer would be. The design guidelines state that, quote, "New dormers should be similar in design and scale to an existing dormer on the building." If there are no existing dormers, new dormers should be similar in design and scale to an existing historic dormer or another historic building in similar style and massing. So there are no historic dormers on this, um, on this, uh, on this house, um, currently. Just before I move on, hopefully you can see that better on your screen than we can on the screen up there. The applicant, after the staff recommendation had been written and published, they did provide, um, uh, updated drawings with some revisions. Mainly, you can see here, um, the applicant made the roof form a hip rather than a gable. The material is now horizontal lapped siding rather than board and batten. And the wooden pattern had changed. So while these changes are an improvement, they do not address the overall fact, the overall scale, the dormers are too large for this roof form. So in both versions, the dormer is not set off the ridge by two feet. It's not two feet off the valley of the side bay and it's not two feet back from the main edge of the hip to roof. So staff finds that the dormers are out of scale. So just here are some examples within the immediate context. This house is actually directly next door at thirteen ten Calvin. Here are some dormers. I don't know when these were constructed, but, you know, um, but are more in keeping with what we'd wanna see on a historic roof form if you're adding new side dormers. Here's one directly across the street at thirteen thirteen Calvin, which is quite small, but it's also on a smaller hip to roof form. These are kind of behind it on Ordway. And, uh, more on Ordway. So going back to thirteen twelve Calvin. So Calvin's roof has a, kind of an odd form where the hip fo- there's a hip form along Fourteenth Street and then a flatter form. So the hip does not extend all the way kind of to the wall and beyond to form the eve. There's kind of the hip and then it flattens out. There's probably a historic term for that, but I don't know it off the top of my head. So, uh, the proposed dormers will extend over this valley onto the flat roof form, which staff finds does not meet the design guidelines. So staff has provided feedback to the applicant that a dormer that's just about two windows, um, tall and wide would be most appropriate for this type of roof form. Because, you know, because this roof form is kind of constrained by both the flatter roof form and the bays to the side. So here are the dormers on the right side of the house. I think I wrote left, but this is the right side of the house. Again, they provided, uh, an updated drawing, which is pretty much the same in this case. The only differences are the window openings are slightly the same, but it doesn't address staff's overall concerns. So for this one, in both cases, the, the stormer is not two feet off the valley of the bay. It also should probably have a hip, it also should have a hip roof form. And it should have siding rather than board and batten, which I think they are showing there, so that's an improvement. And again, similar to the other side, you know, if a dormer here was gonna be built, one that's kind of just, just two windows, wide and tall, um, you know, two small double hung windows is what would be appropriate to kind of meet the design guidelines in terms of being two feet off of any, two feet off of any ridge, two feet off of any valley, and two feet off, um, a wall below. And then also, um, in both versions, the, um, the rear dormer kind of extends over the back hip, which is not something staff finds to be appropriate. Kind of that back hip form should remain and, and not be kind of touched or extended over. You can kind of see it here in the roof plan or the second floor plan. So, um, in conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval of this project, finding that the proposed dormers and rooftop demolition do not meet sections three A, three B, six A, six B, six D, and six E of part one and the Lockland Springs chapter of part two of the design guidelines for turn of century districts. The applicant is here, I think she, you've probably already received in, in front of you now, um, her handout and she also has a presentation. But I'm happy to answer any questions before I turn it over to her.
Thank you, Melissa.
You moved up.
Applicant, thank you for your patience in waiting this late. So we appreciate your time.
Sorry, what do I do to?
Um, just press the front arrow when you're ready to move on.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Casey Riley. I'm here with my husband, Cade. We are the homeowners at thirteen twelve Calvin. To give you a little background, um, on how we got here, we went into contract on this house two years ago. And since then, we have, you know, gone into a pandemic. My husband and I both work from home full time now. We had a daughter in July of twenty twenty and we are expecting another child this coming twenty twenty. So needless to say, our spatial needs have changed drastically in two years. We have gone through many rounds of drawings at this point. We have, we feel we have many constraints with the current roof form. And there aren't a lot of similar, um, homes in the neighborhood to give us, to give us guidance. But I'll just address the concerns that the staff has, has had. The first was the change in the window on the first floor. So to add in a staircase, we had to, um, relay out the kitchen and in doing so, we needed to run cabinets across the wall where that window is today. And, um, in doing so, we also wanted to have the opportunity to bring in more natural light. Being a north facing home, we don't get the best natural light. And so wanting to maximize that, we did feel that, um, our interpretation of section three B one D says that, um, changes to window openings may be appropriate on the rear or side facades beyond the midpoint of the home. So as, as long as the new window and door pattern meet the design guidelines for proportion and rhythm of openings. As you can see from this image, um, we feel like we're, we're hitting that design, um, guideline. Also, um, the design guidelines define proportion and rhythm of openings in section sixty-two. As the window opening should be representative of the window patterns of the historic building or with historic buildings in the vicinity. So taking a look at buildings in the vicinity, our neighbors at, um, fourteen hundred Forest Avenue have very, a very similar window opening and configuration that we, um, are proposing. And although the design guidelines did not explicitly mention visibility, this home is also just as visible as ours on the corner of Fourteenth and Forest, so just a few blocks from our house. And arguably, our proposed window plan, um, is more historically appropriate as it includes double hung windows with four inch trim separating each window. There are also all wood construction with the windows that we picked out for that, um, that space. Separately, many of the historic homes in our neighborhood that have sets of double hung windows, don't always have multiple sets, only one. We found many, um, examples where homes had double, or double hung windows, um, sets of them or a, a triple. But that was the only, um, one window or set of windows that I, we could find. And we just showed a couple of examples, as we were taking the dogs and the baby for a stroll through the neighborhood. I'm gonna move on for the sake of time. On the demolition partial portion of the building, staff had concern with the partial demolition of the original, um, hip roof. We feel that the staff recommendation does not consider that the back historic roof form was actually already, um, partially demolished and that was approved by the Historic Commission with a previous addition done to the home. But prior to us purchasing. So as you can see, about half of the original hip roof form remains intact after the addition. And then, I know it's hard to see, hopefully on your handout, you can see it a little bit better. But our architect, um, felt like the detailing on the shingles was really hard to, to see that roof form. So, um, our proposed plans still keep about fifty percent of that hip roof form intact. And where we have removed it from the top, we've actually restored it at the bottom. So that hip roof form is still there and we believe that, um, you know, the removal of, uh, the, the sedition down the road would not compromise that any more than the current addition that is sitting there today. Lastly, um, the back corner of our home will not be visible from any public vantage point, so it shouldn't be qualified as a major portion of the building. Therefore, we feel it doesn't contribute architecturally to the character of Lockland Springs if it's not visible, you know, publicly. Also, we did opt for shed style dormers, um, which allow us to maximize the space. As you can see from our roof form, uh, we're really, really condensed in what we can do. We've tried a bunch of different things with our architect and feel like where we've landed is in the best place that, uh, that we can be to give us the space that we need as a growing family. And still being as historically accurate as, as we can. On the next section, I won't touch on this since Melissa, thank you for including that here. But, um, we did make a few updates around the dormers, the cladding, um, so she already spoke to that. Let's see. The, the windows on the proposed dormers, um, were also a concern. So we did, um, we did increase those to cover more of the width of the front. We're seeing, uh, different window patterns in the neighborhood. You know, trying to, uh, the top, uh, five eleven North Fourteenth Street is a hip roof form. It's not exactly the same as ours, but, um, you can just see the size and scale and then the inconsistent, uh, window patterns on that home. And then also, just around the block from us at fourteen eighteen Stratton, three, three windows that are separated. So again, we're just seeing across the neighborhood, really inconsistent window patterns and feel that what we have proposed is very, um, would, would fit in with, uh, the neighborhood and would certainly not stand out. And then, um, addressing the, addressing the, uh, the proposed dormers. So in the staff recommendation, they proposed, um, a small, uh, small dormer. That was really the only proposed solution, um, and that just doesn't work for this project. It doesn't give us the space that we need to make this, um, project worthwhile. And also, I feel like the, uh, staff's recommendation doesn't take into consideration other aspects of our home and the significant differences from the homes of our neighbors. First and foremost, our home has three large gables. We have one on the front and two on the sides that kind of make up the first half of our home. So we've got, um, kind of a, I guess what I've been calling a combination roof form, where we have hip roof, but we also have, um, the gables as well. All but one of the provided, uh, examples, uh, lacked, uh, any sort of gable. Second, all but one of the shared examples actually had a dormer on the front, which is pretty characteristic of hip reforms in our neighborhood. Our house doesn't have a dormer on the front. We actually proposed a dormer in our first drawing on the front and we, um, removed that after feedback from the staff. And, uh, also, I mentioned just our unique, kind of that combination roof form. None of those examples, or sorry, one of those examples, um, had a combo roof form, but it also had a dormer on the front. So that's really limiting the front half of, uh, the attic upstairs that we really can't use for usable square footage and bedrooms and such. Aside though, we feel that, um, the proposed dormers do comply with the design guidelines. Section sixty-five states that side dormer should be compatible with scale and design of the building. And because our home has these sizable gables, the proposed dormers should be larger to balance that scale and design of the home. The dormer size, uh, of our direct neighbors would really look disproportionate on our home, um, next to that large gable and, um, with the proposed addition as well. And for the sake of time, I'm gonna keep going, oh, um, I guess one other comment, you know, certainly you can find other hip reforms in our neighborhood with smaller dormers. I'm not gonna deny that. You can, you can find that very easily. Most of those, um, are, are located on all four sides. We don't have that luxury of, of being able to utilize that front space. But you can also find hip reforms in our neighborhood with larger dormers. And I've just shared a couple of exam, of examples. Fourteen twenty-four Ordway, um, has three large dormers. This is a hip roof form, just showing you five eleven North Fourteenth Street. Again, large dormers in scale, um, on, right behind our house at thirteen oh seven Ordway. It has a hip roof form and a large shed style dormer with, um, four windows. That's also very visible. And then just down the street from us, a few houses over, twelve fourteen Calvin just went through a renovation project and added a second story with four large shed, um, shed, shed style dormers as well. And then, let's see, did I? Maybe I didn't include, oh, at the bottom, um, also in our street thirteen oh two Calvin, this was the closest home that I could find that, um, had a similar roof form to us, both the hip and the gable. And as you can see, the addition that was done on this home, they added a shed style dormer over the original building footprint that crosses over to the addition. So this was a pretty sizable, um, addition that they did. I don't know when they went through this project, but this was the closest home that I could find to our, um, property. And I had a lot to get through, but, um, just wanna say thank you for having us, um, you know, really respect the, uh, the commission staff, uh, time and, and efforts here. But we really feel that this project is very unique. And there's a lot of things that are working against us. And at the end of the day, we're just trying to stay in this house that we love so much. It, it truly, it's a house we wanna be in for, forever if we can. We just need more space for our growing family. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Just make sure we got that in? Okay, commissioners?
I'll go. Thank you for the presentation. I can tell you put a lot of work into it. I know the house, I pass it often. All of these issues, just so you know, we see from homeowners frequently, uh, these exact same situations. So we, we don't take this lightly. But I, I think the staff recommendation analysis is correct and consistent with past decisions. You, you, uh, a lot of time, people will, will walk around the neighborhood and take pictures or, or note things. But we didn't necessarily review them or they were done years ago before there was any overlay zoning or they were built originally that way. We try to take each case, uh, on a case by case basis without, um, We try to take each case, on a case by case basis without reconsidering or relitigating what might have happened in the past, whether or not we even reviewed it to begin with. On this one, I'm, I'm willing to discuss the, the first floor window, since it is past the midpoint of the home. I know we have made, this is pretty drastic change, and usually, we, we try to keep those limited to pretty small changes. When it comes to the dormers, we consistently hold applicants to design in the dormer so that it is two foot off, off the exterior wall. That's, I can't remember us ever allowing that not to be the case. It's, it's what's written in, in the guidelines, and I'm persuaded by the staff analysis on this one that that's what we should hold, hold here too. So, I, I understand that the need for, for additional room. Maybe there's another way with your architect to figure that out through an addition on the rear, something like that, that is within the design guidelines. Those are my initial thoughts. I'd like to hear what anybody else has to say.
Thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Price, but I, I also, in the, in the handout we received, you know, there's some updated drawings that are different than what were submitted in the application. But I'm not, I mean, I don't feel like I've had time to go through and assess completely.
So, I didn't, I'm not sure what's in the packet, I haven't seen. I mean, she sent me the packet today, but I haven't looked through it. I know that they did send me drawings, I think, last week or something, and those are the ones that I included in the PowerPoint, so if they're, I can go back to what, but if they've been changed since last week, I have not seen them or had the chance to look at them.
I think there was just like a proposed like hip roof instead of the shed and so, but it's, it's new information, so I'm not sure if staffs had a chance to process any of it, or if it, if it, or maybe that's what I'm seeing.
Yeah, so what I've seen on, what you see on the screen, or what hopefully you can see on the screen, staff has had a chance to look at and has a chance to analyze, and we thought that, I mean, the differences are fairly minor in our opinion. You know, changing from a gable to a hip is an improvement. The window pattern is an improvement. Certainly, the lap siding versus the board and mat is an improvement, but it, it didn't address the overall concerns regarding the scale. So, and the same for the other facade too. You know, there was some minor changes, sorry, I can't, there we go. There are some minor changes to the winter pattern and the materials, but, and again, not addressing the overall concern about the scale, in staff's opinion.
I agree with Commissioner Price. I mean, it's, as a homeowner, I struggle or try to enlarge the house and try to utilize existing footprint, and especially historic housing. But to me, altering, you know, historic roof, that is a big, you know, negative point. And so, I think as we presented, including, you know, windows and dormers and size, even though minor change, I don't think I'm ready to approve that. So, I, I think staff analysis right on, so I'm inclining to support staff analysis on this item.
Thank you.
I agree, and I would also bring up what Commissioner Price said. You know, I would be open to a discussion just on that lower window, since it is past the midpoint. I know it is still, their staff had, since it is still highly visible, but, you know, I feel like we've done that, I don't know, but that would be one thing that I would be willing, again, and we're not redesigning this in this meeting, but that issue is one that I would be willing, since it is beyond the midpoint, and we have done that before, that I would be willing to, to consider perhaps in a, for me, in a new application with a different design that fits more in the guidelines.
Any other comments? I mean, would, if we did concede to that, I mean, you know, again, we're not here to replan this because we're not the architects, but, you know, if that does, you know, you're sort of piecemealing a, a detail where if it does affect the roof line, or, because again, I think she said something about stairs, and so then, you know, you've got that going on with upstairs, so.
Yeah, I don't think we should probably piece it apart at this point. It sounds like we're in, in agreement with staff recommendations, so we could ask for whatever redesign does come back, maybe that's something that can be considered. But at this point, I'm more inclined to ask the applicants to continue working with staff and come back with something that's more complies with the guidelines.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
Okay, so, given that, in consideration of thirteen twelve Calvin Avenue, I move to approve the staff recommendation.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a second? All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? I see none opposed, so that motion passes. Applicant, thank you very much for your work. We appreciate you working with the staff, continuing.
All right, next up is six sixteen, six sixteen Malta. The applicant does not seem to be here, so we are recommending approval, so I will probably go through this fairly quickly, but if you have questions, let me know, stop me. So, this is Haynes Heights neighborhood. This is, I believe, your first infill in Haynes Heights, so something a little bit different. It's more of a mid-century modern neighborhood versus all of our other districts, which are late nineteenth and early twentieth century. So, the applicant, here's just some context photos. It's a ranch style homes around. The applicant is proposing new infill. There is an attached garage, which meets the design guidelines for Haynes Heights because that was a common feature in the neighborhood. Here is the front of the house, again, kind of a mid-century modern inspiration to the design, one story in the front. There's a lot of slopes to the lot, so it's two stories in the rear. You can see the attached garage on the lower images on the side. Here are some renderings, and overall, staff is recommending approval with our standard conditions, which you see there on the screen.
And thank you, Melissa.
Okay.
And since the applicant, the applicant is not here, so we will open public hearing. Seeing none in the audience, we are closing public hearing, and commissioners, we are here to discuss.
I think it's exciting to see our first, our first new project in, in Haynes Heights. It's really fun. So, unless there's further discussion in regard to six sixteen Malta Avenue, I recommend approval with staff, of the staff recommendation.
There's a motion, there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. None opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. And to the applicant, it was a very, very well-done project.
Okay. Yeah, this one, and then one that was pulled from consent. So, twenty-two oh four Mal, no, White Avenue is an application to demolish an existing house and construct a new two-story house. The existing house was constructed circa nineteen seventy-one. It's a nice little mod ranch that might be appropriate in Hills Heights, but in this neighborhood, it's not considered historic, so it doesn't contribute to the historic character of the overlay. And I'll speed up too, since nobody's here. The applicant was here for a previous project, so he must have felt comfortable with the staff recommendation. There's the context, one and two stories, and some three-story houses across the street. The two on the left and right were, are historic, and the one in the middle was approved by this commission in twenty eighteen. Proposed new construction of a two-story house. There's a site plan, we're recommending that the front setback be the average of the nearest adjacent houses, sorry, the average of the two nearest historic houses. They proposed the adjacent his, existing houses, neither of which is historic. The house is thirty-one feet, ten feet, thirty-one feet, ten inches tall from grade, thirty-six feet wide. The materials are cement fiber siding, brick foundation and chimney asphalt, and standing C metal roof. The window pattern on the front and left side, staff finds to be compatible. On the right side, staff finds that there's too much, too many large wall spaces without a window. Typically, historic houses have a window every ten or twelve feet, so we recommended revising the window pattern on that right elevation. And there's a rendering. And staff recommendation recommends approval of the application to demolish the non-contributing house and build a new two-story house with following conditions. The foundation height shall be compatible with historic, with nearby historic houses to be verified with an inspection during construction. That the front setback is the average of the adjacent house to the right and the nearest historic house to the left, to be verified by inspection during construction. That window, door, asphalt, roof color, metal roof selection, brick selection, and paving materials are approved. That a window is added on the right side, or that the right side has windows every ten to twelve feet to break up the facade, and that the HVAC and utilities locations are approved by staff. And with those conditions, we find this meets applicable design guidelines for the Woodland and Waverly Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay.
Thank you, Sean.
And as I said, the applicant was here for a previous case, but either we went too long, or he agrees with you. He seemed all right with these recommendations. He said he'd check with the client, and I haven't heard.
Very good. Open public hearing? Seeing none in the audience, we are going to close public hearing, and approval? Discussion?
I would like to make a motion to adopt the staff recommendations at twenty-two oh four White Avenue.
There is a motion? There's a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, this is seventeen oh three Villa Place. It's an application to build an outbuilding. This is the case that was on consent, and with a, a letter of objection from a, a neighbor, this has been pulled, so I'll present it now. The application, as I said, is for an outbuilding. The building has a five hundred and seventy-three square foot footprint. It, it, it will be one and a half stories, twenty-one feet, ten inches tall. The guidelines in this overlay, it's a consolidated guideline overlay, so it allows twenty-five feet tall for a guideline, regardless of the height of the house. The wall height is nine foot eleven, which is permitted, the guidelines allow up to a twelve-foot wall height. The proposed outbuilding will be located, or it is proposed with a three-foot rear setback and three-foot side setback. The, the design guidelines require five-foot setbacks for both. We recommend that this building have a five-foot rear setback, as that, as the garage door faces the alley. And five-foot is what the design guidelines allow. Although the guidelines say five-foot for the side setback, we do find that the side setback reduction of three feet is appropriate here, because the building is only five hundred and seventy-three square feet. They would be allowed to have up to a seven hundred and fifty square foot outbuilding under the design guidelines. And the bulk zoning regulations, which your guidelines, our guidelines supersede, but the design, the bulk zoning regulations would allow a three-foot side setback. So, we find that to be, the setback determination to, from five to three feet under the guidelines to be appropriate for the side, sorry. For the roof, you'll see that it's a gambrel roof form on the outbuilding. This applicant has used a similar set of plans previously behind a gambrel-roofed house, and we found it to be appropriate there. But in this location, the house is a side gabled house, and gambrel roofs are not typical of this neighborhood. So, staff finds that the gambrel on the outbuilding is not appropriate and recommends that it be either a hip or gable, which would be more compatible with a historic house and houses in the neighborhood. The applicant, who's not here, is agreeable to that condition. And there's the view from the alley. You can see the stake there, which is the property line, and we're recommending that aside, that a rear setback of five feet be approved, which meets the design guidelines.
Was that public comment a neighbor?
Yes, it was a neighbor across the alley. They...
But not adjacent?
Well, we consider that to be technically adjacent, but, but it's not, it's not one of the side neighbors, it's adjacent across the alley.
Because, you know, having a three-foot setback versus a five-foot setback would affect that one on the, adjacent.
On the side, yes. You have the letter from the neighbor, so I don't want to kind of put words in their mouth, but they, they were under the assumption that there was a deeper setback than five-foot required. They, they thought, it sounded to me, I spoke to them on the phone before they sent the letter, and they said that they thought that the setback should be more than five feet for the, from the rear.
I have a question, well, whenever it's appropriate, I have a question for Sean.
Sure.
So, and I couldn't find the UZO setbacks, but, but the bulk, the, the bulk zoning regulations, not historic, but the bulk zoning, does say ten feet when the garage door opens to an alley.
That's correct. This commission had, that's correct. The bulk zoning regulations say that for garage doors facing an alley, the setback is ten feet. In historic overlays, for as long as the commission has reviewed setbacks and made determinations, we've typically found, or you've typically found, five feet to be appropriate because that's more consistent with the historic locations of outbuildings, which are often much closer to an alley, often, often no setback at all. So, that's, and that was put into the design, the consolidated guidelines, which say that rear setbacks, even with an alley facing garage door, can be five feet.
Okay. But that's where I think the, the public comment came in, is they're worried about their fence across the alley, because it does not, a lot of room to maneuver. I mean, it's going to be a several-point turn to get in and out of that garage door, and that's where the concern's coming from. Okay.
That's correct.
But that helps to know that the five feet versus the bulk, and that may have been where they had seen and been thinking there was more of a setback allowed.
I'm sure you're right. I think the neighbor is an architect, so they are very familiar, but if they don't work in historic districts, that often maybe, they're used to just following the bulk regulations.
Okay, we have an open public hearing.
I don't think I made my recommendation, so I'll just recommend...
Did you?
Approval of the outbuilding with the three-foot setback, with the five-foot rear setback, that the roof have a hip or gabled form, and no more than one wall dormer. Window and door selections, driveway materials are approved, and that with all that, the drawings are updated to reflect conditions that, any conditions that are imposed or required by the commission in approval, and with those conditions, we find this meets applicable design guidelines.
Thank you, Sean. Let me have more discussion. Open public hearing? Closed public hearing? And we have any more questions?
I just want to clarify, I know the neighbor that wrote that letter, Martin Schaffner, and I used to serve on the board of Historic, of Historic Nashville with him, so he is, you know, aware of historic architecture, so I just want to make that point.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other comments?
Just one comment. Thank you so much for explaining, because when, you know, we do receive public comment, we take seriously, that's why I wanted to pull off other consent agenda. That's why I wanted to pull off other consent agenda. And so we know we are following the guideline. And I think with this condition, if new application meet all these conditions, I think it's appropriate. So I just want to state that, and thank you, Sean, for explaining it.
Would you like to make the motion, Commissioner?
Yes, I make a motion of 1703 Villa Place. We accept staff recommendation with all the condition.
There's a motion.
Quick recommendation, I know you need a second, but before we move on from your recommendation, I'm just wondering if there might be an opportunity for us to talk to the applicant about moving it up a little bit so that there is more of a turn radius, which they may want to do to make their neighbors happy. And then that means they probably don't have 20 feet between the outbuilding and the house. So if you want to do that, maybe that could be added so they don't have to come back again.
I would like that.
So I will amend the motion. We accept staff recommendation with added condition. Applicant may remove the outbuilding closer to the house, even though it may conflict with the 20-foot separation. We will leave it to applicant and talk with the staff on the determination.
Very good. That is the motion, is there a second? There's a second, all in favor of that motion? Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Okay, Robyn, is there anything else we need to discuss?
I apologize, I do have a couple of things, I'll go very quickly. Councilmember Murphy's Bill 2021 621 passed on third reading last night. It will require that an applicant of a project that is required to come to the commission provide notice of the project at least 11 days prior to the public hearing. That includes a mailed notice to all properties owners within 250 feet and posting of yard signs. The applicant's responsible for the cost and prep for the notice and providing proof of compliance. And this procedure will be in place for the May 2 deadline, for the May public hearing. Councilmember O'Connell is considering expanding the historic downtown preservation overlay, and that may include portions of Third, Fourth, and Union. And a virtual community meeting will be on March 23, 3:30. So if there's anyone who, not commissioners necessarily, but anyone listening who wishes to attend, the easiest thing is just to contact me so I can send you a direct link. But the link is also on the agenda, it's just really long. And next month, keep in mind that the meeting will be at the Bransford Conference Room, 2602 Bransford Avenue, with the entrance off of Berry Road. Thank you.
Yeah, wow. Thank you. Thank you, staff, thank you, commissioners. It is seven o'clock, and we have been here for five hours. Thank you so much. I pushed the button again.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.